Good afternoon, counsel. We're back in session. And Alderman Collier, your card.
Thank you. Thank you, worship. There was one little item of business that I -- we wanted to bring forward last night as a motion arising in relation to the potential airport tunnel discussion. Madam Clerk, I believe, has the motion arising. And this is basically counsel asking for us to be regularly updated at council as the negotiations proceed. So the wording of it is, direct administration to provide counsel with a briefing on the progress on negotiations with the Calgary Airport Authority and any changes to the projected costs of the airport tunnel at each council meeting in camera when appropriate, commencing 2011 February 14th until an agreement is finalized.
Do I have a second or Alderman Farrell?
Thank you.
You worship, yesterday counsel made a motion which was appended to report number five, which asked us to provide a report to counsel on the 21st of March. I had spoken with the mayor yesterday, and my interpretation of that direction was to provide counsel with an update as to where we were at that day. So the impact of this particular motion would be for us to report then the week before as well. So you're looking for two updates, one on the 14th, one on the 21st.
Yeah, basically. That's why we said up to March 21st, to leave it open. But I think we really want to keep apprised on a regular basis as far as how you're doing.
So if what I've said is acceptable, I'll sit down. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, and Mr. Tolbert, that can be a verbal report, I believe, Alderman.
Sure.
Call your card.
Verbal's fine.
On the motion, Alderman Farrell? Alderman McLeod?
Thank you. I'd like to take--
I'm sorry, Alderman McLeod, on the motion, then we'll -- I know you have a greetings. On the motion, counsel, are we agreed? Are there any opposed? I see none. Alderman McLeod, presentation.
Thank you. Seems to be some confusion there. It's my honor to and privilege to introduce the North Haven Elementary School. We have 18 students and teacher Allison Bates Church and volunteer tour guide Cheryl Peters. Welcome, and you'll be on TV in a second, I think.
So class, if you'd like to stand so counsel can recognize you, and there you are And I hope you enjoy your day. It's warmer in here than it is outside. Thank you, Alderman McLeod. And counsel, that takes us to item 9.2.1, Royal Vista Royal Oak Transportation. Who is the vice chair of LPT?
Oh, the chair's here.
The chair's here. This is, I've just called item 9.2.1, Royal Vista Transportation. You moving recommendations, Alderman?
I'd like to move the recommendations of all the LPT items on the agenda today, your worship.
Thank you very much. Do we have a second or? Second, Alderman Collier, your card. On LPT 2011-02, on the recommendations, are we agreed? Are there any opposed? I see none, thank you. On the recommendations of item 9.2.3, designation of the President Apartments as a municipal historic resource. Did I miss one? I'm sorry. I'm sorry, counsel, I missed one. I double-shooted it here. On item 9.2.2, the BRT network plan. Alderman Carrotta, I'm sorry, Alderman Chabot, did you ask to speak to that? Are there--
No, no, your worship, just happy to move the recommendations of the committee. There was a very lengthy debate on this particular issue, and I don't think I need to debate it further, but happy to close if someone wishes to debate it.
You, I see no discussion on that. Whoops. Alderman Collier, your card.
I just wanted to, I missed this, but when I brought this motion forward, it was, I really didn't anticipate we'd have this comprehensive report, and I know that you had to really ramp it up in order to get this work done amongst many other things that you were working on, GM Logan. So, thank you very much. I'm excited about it, and I was wondering if you had any ideas on how we could fund it.
Mr. Logan.
Your worship, thank you. I believe that one of the points I made when we were talking about the Southeast LRT and the green trip funding was so that I felt that that was an opportunity to make progress on some of the BRT initiatives in the short term by using some of our green trip allocation. But we really needed this network plan in place so that counsel had the full menu of where we wanted to go with BRT. And then within that master plan, we can prioritize the individual routes. So, in the short term, I would say that the green trip is our best opportunity to turn some of these into reality. That's the infrastructure side of it, then we have to deal with the operating piece. And the operating piece will be a challenge, as you know, counsel is trying to find that balance between property tax increases and providing service. So we'll have to look at, in our update, our business plan update, how we can roll out the service over the next few years.
Right. So it was probably already asked a committee, and forgive me, counsel, but does your department, do you get that this is a top priority for this council when you're looking at your next three-year business cycle, that we are significantly committed to moving in this direction?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, no doubt about it.
Thank you. Thank you, worship.
Alderman Crowe?
Yeah, I guess my first question is, what are we recommending here? Are we recommending administration's recommendations or the recommendations of the SPC on land use planning?
The recommendations of the committee.
Okay, recommending. Then I have nothing further to add.
Alderman Chabot, close?
Yeah, to close briefly, your worship, but members of counsel will remember that we did move the green trip funding forward at our last council meeting as an item of urgent business, hence the reason why it's not included as part of the LPT reports that were actually debated at the January 19th meeting in conjunction with the balance of the agenda here. But part of what was decided at committee was the allocation of some of those funds specifically related to some of the routes that are identified within this report. So I think in light of counsel's previous decision on the green trip funding and how to allocate those funds are actually kind of leaving it open as to where exactly we're going to allocate those funds. It will address some of the needs identified within this report, so hopefully counsel can support the recommendations of committee. Close.
Very much. On the recommendations of LPT 2011-03, are we agreed? Are there any opposed? I see none, thank you very much. Item 9.2.3, LPT 2011-07, designation of President Apartments as a municipal historic site. Alderman Putman's.
Yes, thank you, your worship. Question, if I may, to administration. I'm not sure, Mr. Delgleish, or who would assist. Question about the ownership of this building. Is this the President's Apartments?
Yes.
Yeah. Who is haunted and have they, there's nothing in here to indicate their interest in this, and it might even be a bit of a process question. I've always been intrigued about these designations as to what the role of the owner is, what the negotiation is with the city.
Mr. Tolbert?
Is he okay?
That's all information I was unaware of. I was going to say that Mr. Watson, who would know the answer to that, isn't here, and I'm not too sure Mr. Delgleish knows the answer to that either. But if Alderman Mar is confident and that's the information, then I hope that's an answer that suffices.
I have great trust in Alderman Mar's knowledge on this. If I may say, would, I may ask another question, perhaps directed at you, Mr. Tolbert. Is it reasonable to expect that a letter or some consent from the owner would accompany this? Because my understanding is that as desirable and as important as the preservation is of these buildings, it sometimes puts in a series of fairly onerous obligations on the owner, which are sometimes problematic, and I would have more comfort if I knew that the owner was accepting of these conditions as well.
Your worship, if I understood or heard Alderman Mar right, he indicated that the owner was aware and was okay with it, I think that was the word he used. But you know what? There's no letter here to confirm that.
No, no, that's what I'm saying. I accept Alderman Mar's information, and thank you, Alderman Mar. What I'm questioning is a matter of routine, is a matter of procedure. Is it, does administration typically attach an owner's consent or letter to such reports?
Normally, we do, your worship. In fact--
That's what I'm asking.
These things don't make it to counsel without having had a long series of negotiations between the administration and the property owner to get here. I don't even know if we have the ability to do it without their consent.
That would be my expectation, except I saw no evidence of that in the report.
I wonder, Alderman Putman, if I could ask Mr. Tully to comment on some of the legal processes.
Please, I'd be terrific. It's more just for information's sake. I've no particular axe to grind.
Well, my understanding, your worship, is under the Act, the owner has to be served with a notice of the proposed designation and then can object to that. And if the owner believes that there's been a loss in value, then the owner can make an application to the Land Compensation Board on this type of a designation, your worship. So I understand from Alderman Mar that the owner is not objecting in this situation, and this is a fairly standard designation.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
See no further questions. On the recommendations of 9.2.3, are we agreed? Are there any opposed? I see none, thank you very much. Item 9.2.4, LPT 2011-08, Calgary Building Permit Bylaw 60M94. There has to be a bylaw passed on the designation. So there's a bylaw-- There is a, what it is, is a recommendation to give three readings to--
Worship, upon a point of order, I believe we need to do three readings on the bylaw.
Yeah, we do. We're just starting out which number here.
10M.
I show 9M.
You've got the building permit bylaw.
Oh, yeah.
This is the designation bylaw.
Oh, I'm sorry. There's a, I'm sorry, thank you very much. There's a bylaw associated with the previous item on the designation of the apartment building. So it's proposed bylaw 10M, 2011, three readings. On first reading of 10M, 2011, are we agreed? Are there any opposed? On second reading, are we agreed? Are there any opposed? Authorization for third. Are we agreed? It's unanimous. On third reading, are we agreed? Carrie, thank you very much. Now we'll go to Building Permit Bylaw 64M94. And on the recommendation, are we agreed? Are there any opposed? I see none. On first reading of bylaw 9M, 2011, are we agreed? Are there any opposed? I see none. Second reading, are we agreed? Any opposed? I see none. Authorization for third reading. Are there any, are we agreed? Are there any opposed? See none. Third reading of bylaw 9M, 2011, are we agreed? Any opposed? I see none, thank you. Brings us to you and E., Alderman Jones.
Your worship, I would like to not move this. I would like to make an amendment. I would like to do an amendment.
Who's the vice chair? Alderman Farrell?
Thank you. I'm happy to move this. Thank you. For those members of counsel who had the privilege of sitting through the public hearing, it was a very interesting day and a very long day, and most members of councils, I think, sat through the entire public hearing. What we heard was a lot of passion from the public. There were strong views on both sides, both on the benefits of fluoride and on the risks. And I would imagine that the truth is likely somewhere in between. What's changed from when we debated this in the 90s is that we've learned about many other viable alternatives as well as emerging risks. What it really boils down to for me is a question of ethics. Because there are viable alternatives and many, many discussions of the risks that are emerging from around the world, should we have the right to impose what many see as a medication on our fellow man through a plebiscite? If you look at plebiscites in city, or if you look at street improvement, local improvement, laneway paving, sidewalk, you need 66% of the landowners to vote on it, no opting out. And yet, we have made a decision, what appeared like for all time, with a simple majority of voters. So 130,000 people have made a decision for all of Calgarians. And I have a problem with that. I think no person can become an expert on their neighbor's health and the impacts of that health. So considering that the available choices, what we heard as well, is a woman from Switzerland talked about the European example, where fluoridated salt is readily available in Europe. They decided to cease fluoridating their tap water in Europe, generally in about 1970s, and made fluoridated salt readily available. It's cheap, it's easy, and people have a choice. And that's where I'm really coming from, is that principle of choice. Our responsibility is to provide safe, clean drinking water, and we have many, many Calgarians who are avoiding their water, even though they pay for it, because they would like to have the choice. What really resonated with me is the dissenting point of view from Dr. Nosal, who sent us a letter. He was on the expert panel that we appointed in 97, and he was the dissenting view. He wrote a minority report. He remains very concerned about fluoride. His choice at that time was to remove it from the drinking water, but he was satisfied in presenting a minority report. And his dissension was one of the reasons why the amount was reduced to .7. He had suggested no more than .5 to .7. So the city of Calgary, with their leadership, chose .7, and that has now become, over a decade later, 15 years later, it has become the prevailing wisdom across North America. That wasn't generated by the Alberta Health Services Council. That was the city of Calgary acting and providing leadership. And I think we can do that again and--
The council--
And the council of the day. Thank you, Alderman O'Ades. And I suggest that we do the same today. And we, this is a, this is a conversation that is happening around the world. It's an emerging, very hot topic, and I believe we need to act and be the vanguards of, in Canada. There was a lot of discussion about poverty. I found it really interesting. One of their first speakers was someone who represents a poverty group, and he said, if we really want to deal with poverty and the issue of tooth-to-gay for children in low-income families, then deal with poverty and turn over that funding to poverty groups to deal with that specific issue. I think that's certainly more directed. If you look at the demographic change since we first introduced it, we're baby boomers. It was introduced when we were, it was a baby boom, and now we have an aging population. And so the study of fluoride on a lifetime of users for an aging population, I don't believe has been done thoroughly. So counsel, I'm putting this forward. I'll put my motion forward. I know Alderman Keating has an amendment for the second portion of it. I also urge you, please, to support the second portion. This isn't just to get fluoride out of our drinking water. It's, we've accepted the responsibility as a municipality for dental care for many years now. This is transferring that responsibility to where the real issue is, the issue of poverty and dental health. So I would be happy to address any questions in my close. Thank you.
On the motion, Alderman Jones.
Thank you, worship. What I'm about to do probably won't be popular, but I'm not here for a popularity contest. Since that meeting, we went from 9:30 in the morning till late 15 that night. We heard from over 40 to 50 speakers. That, since that day, I've had numerous phone calls and emails from people on both sides of the issue, wanting it in, the left end, and wanting it taken out as well, requesting that we do this on a plebiscite. They don't feel that we're their experts either. They feel that it's their decision to make, not our decision to make on their behalf. And for that reason, I'm going to bring forward an amendment to this, that we refer this to a plebiscite for the 2013 election.
So your, Alderman Jones and Madam Clerk, I'll need some help here. Is this a referral or an amendment? It's a referral motion.
Okay. I want to refer it to a plebiscite to the 2013, and if you don't agree with it, that's fine.
Seconded by Alderman McLeod. On the referral motion, Alderman, referrals are--
Point of order?
Debatable?
Okay.
Point of order by--
Is, can you make an amendment to an referral? Sorry. Can you make a referral to an amendment? An amendment to a referral?[1259.04][1259.04][laughing]
I want to refer that amendment.
Okay. Thank you.
Only as to time, Alderman, among. On the referral, Alderman Putman.
Yes, thank you.
Counsel, I don't do hand-waving. I'm going to follow the queue here.
Yes, fair. Thank you. Oh, I just blew it then in terms of the queue. I heartily endorse Alderman Jones's referral motion. I think we've created an expectation in the minds of the public that this issue is satisfied by plebiscite. I understand that technically, legally, procedurally, we are not obliged to follow a plebiscite. I think it's tremendously important that, just speaking for myself on counsel, that a small, relatively small group of eight or 10 people can actually make a decision of this magnitude for the entire population. I know we have that authority, but I think, again, to repeat, the public believes that this is in the public domain, and this is, in fact, a decision that they should be making. The debate I would look forward to having subsequently is when that plebiscite would be held, and my expectation would be that the public might have some tolerance for waiting till the next election, which time this plebiscite would be relatively inexpensive. I think that one of the dilemmas that I have is similar to, actually ironically, another current issue in Ward Six with cell phone towers, is there does not seem to be a consensus on any science, that the peer-reviewed journals are, on both issues, do not lead to a consensus which decision-makers such as ourselves would really optimistically and maybe ideally have available to us. So for that reason as well, I think that a plebiscite is by far, in a way, the best alternative for us at this stage. Thank you.
On the referral motion, Alderman McLeod.
Thank you. I will support the plebiscite option. I think that residents of the city need to have an opportunity to participate in this debate. It is very divisive among people, and I think that individuals have the right to express their opinions on their health and make that. I have some difficulty making health, public health decisions on behalf of residents. I think it's fine when we make planning decisions, transportation decisions, we have the expertise, and that's what we're here to do. When we make public health decisions, it, although it's in the water and we're responsible for the water, I see it as an issue that goes beyond the purview of counsel per se. I, and I just want to add that while I have had a lot of emails on both sides, I've also brought up the issue in meeting with various community associations, and I haven't heard the level of, how would I put it, rank or passion at that level, that certainly people have opinions, but it's much more divided and much more calm than what I've heard here. And I think that's important, that there may be a silent group out there. I also think that the time between now and the plebiscite gives us everyone an opportunity to get informed on this, because as was expressed by Alderman Farrell, there is a lot of information out there, and it's very difficult to discern what is substantive research and research that has been less rigorous. We've seen that in other issues related to vaccinations, where research has been proven to be, something that was thought to be quite substantive has been proven to be not so much so. And I wonder how we evaluate some of that here as well. So I will support the plebiscite option.
You, on the amendment, Alderman Keating. On the amendment? Oh, I'm sorry, the referral.
Okay.[1524.13][1524.13][laughing] Well, I wasn't going to speak to this because I actually had my light on for an amendment, but I think I will. When we were here, I have to admit, the best evidence I heard from a medical doctor who was pro-fluoride summed up all of the research in two simple statements, that it is likely to be a benefit and it is unlikely to be harmful. And then when we looked at other research and we found that roughly there's, if we took into account and we accepted that there is about a 15% less cavity ratio in fluoride than non-fluoride in small children, I think there's a better way, and I think that better way is option two, where we can benefit the people in Calgary a lot better than fluoridation across the board. Therefore, I will not support the referral, and I'd like an amendment if it doesn't go through.
You, on the referral, Alderman Mar.
Thank you, your worship. Well, I'm not going to support this because of the fact that I believe that this will, in fact, trigger the $6 million capital upgrade in the timeframe that we are able to bring this to bear, if we are going to go and have a plebiscite. And let's say that plebiscite, where we've heard from our constituents numerous times, is overwhelmingly to remove it, and then we've gone ahead and wasted that $6 million capital upgrade. I still believe that this is mass medication without consent. I believe that this is something that we should not be involved in because it is, falls under healthcare, which is a provincial responsibility. And I think that I have heard from my constituents very, very clearly, get it out. So I will not be supporting the motion to go to a plebiscite.
I'm going to ask Mr. Pritchard to comment on the capital upgrade and whether or not, if the decision to go with a plebiscite is endorsed by counsel, if we can, in fact, delay that capital expenditure.
Thank you, worship. Well, I think the first thing is that it's not $6 million. It's, from what we know now, from the preliminary work we've done with the consultant, it's closer to three, three to four million. What we would do is, we would, we would not spend, we would not spend any more money than we had to to keep the system going, let's put it that way. And we've been anticipating what the different outcomes could be of this debate and been thinking about that, and would go in very carefully and in a very measured kind of a way, and really only do what was absolutely necessary to keep the system running until a plebiscite would have happened, without throwing good money after bad. So it would be quite a measured. So yes, there would be some cost potentially, but not the full extent. We wouldn't go ahead and do a major upgrade at this point.
So the entire $3 million would not be spent doing this?
That's correct. We would just do what we could do to keep, keep the system going in anticipation of a result, one way or the other.
Do you have any sort of order of magnitude cost that that might be?
No. Well, less than $4 million.
Less than $4 million. That's true.
You know, we haven't even done the engineering. I mean, once we heard that this was coming to counsel, we kind of put a break on the engineering. We don't have the money specifically set aside or approved in our capital budget yet. That was going to be in '12 to '14 anyway. So you wouldn't have seen any kind of significant spend until 2012 at the earliest. So in terms of being able to make a system, to keep a system running until we were ready with a positive decision, one way or the other, then, I mean, we're used to doing that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pritchard. On the referral, Alderman Stevenson.
Thank you, your worship. No, I will not be supporting the idea of going to a plebiscite. I think that, I personally think counsel made a mistake in doing the plebiscite before. Of course, there's been, I think it's six plebiscites, right? So we've spent a lot of money on plebiscites, and we've got nothing to give a clear indication of what the people of Calgary want through those plebiscites. of what the people of Calgary want through those plebiscites, especially when you think that 20% to 30% of the people vote, and then we get 52% or 53% that say to do it. What do we do if we have a plebiscite and it comes back at 48% want it or 52% want it? What do we do? We have so many examples of bylaws in this city, local improvement bylaws and so on, where we say that 66% of the people affected have got to agree to it, not 66% of the people who decide to vote, but 66% of the people who are affected have to agree to it, or else it can't be imposed on the other 33%. Here we are saying that a small percentage of the people of the city can impose something far more serious than a levy of a few hundred dollars on the people that live, the rest of the million people who live in this city. I don't think, we have all kinds of evidence now of the fact that there's questions, questions over and over, we're hearing of questions about the safety of the, of this product, this ingredient being put into the water. And I'm reading more and more, I'm just reading about the Tennessee where they're actually directing the state, the Health Department, to halt activities to promote the practice of water fluoridation. And they go on to talk about fluoride gate, bringing inquiries into, they're surfacing about the, why the Centre for Disease Control and other groups have not openly communicated important science that contradicts years of assurances that fluoride has been exhaustively researched and poses no health risks. Why aren't they doing this? So what they're saying is that there's going to be legal battles on this, and one of the people says that, the chairman, or here it is, the chairman of the National Health Council Fluoride Committee stated that when we look at the studies that have been done, we found that many of these questions are unsettled, and we have much less information than we should. So I think...
Alderman Stevenson, with respect, you've had four minutes and never once touched time.
So I think that it's wrong for us to move...
Alderman Stevenson, with respect, debatable, debate is limited to time.
Okay. So then what... Pardon? Yeah, in closing, yeah. In a timely matter, and to be brief, as Alderman Chabot always says, to be brief, we should not be considering this, because three years is too long for us to wait. See, I've got the time in there, Your Worship. It's too long for us to wait for the...
Thank you, Alderman Stevenson.
Two and a half years is too long.
Alderman Karah.
Let's make a decision today. Thank you, Your Worship.
Alderman Karah.
We're to rule with an iron fist, Your Worship.
The way you do business.
That's the way you do business, sir. I don't think I've proven to do business that way, but I think I'm eating into my time. The clock is ticking here, so I'm going to... I would say that of the four options that this council has before it, which is vote to remove, vote to keep, vote to refer to a panel, or vote to refer to a plebiscite, plebiscite is the one that is absolutely unacceptable for me. And this is a position that I've arrived at.
Alderman Karah, with respect, as to time on the referral.
What? Pardon me?
The only debatable thing is time. That's what I've been, if you check the...
We're debating the referral. No.
Only...
That is not even remotely...
Without amendment is excepted to time, so...
Well, that hasn't been the practice of this council in its entire seating.
Carry on. Perhaps I've been misreading the procedural bylaw, but I'm not prepared to allow the whole debate to start over again. So carry on, Alderman Karah.
So, okay. So am I understanding that we are now debating the referral, or are we just...
Excepted.
Yeah, well, I mean, I can state unequivocally that it has been the practice of this council to debate referrals.
I think a referral motion is fully debatable, but...
Mr. Tully, do you have a reading on this?
I'm sorry. I stand corrected. I can only, you can only amend it with respect to time.
Okay.
I want to start over.
No.
All right. So we're just saying, all I'm saying is that of the four options that sit before this council, I think that a plebiscite is the least acceptable. I think that the idea that you can have a tyranny of the majority type situation decide what the population on a whole does, I mean, what this, what this council has before it is really a plebiscite on public health. And I think that if the public wants to do a plebiscite, it is within their democratic right to get the signatures signed and bring it before the next election. But I was a signatory to this motion, because I heard from so many citizens who are not happy with fluoride in their water. I supported bringing it to UNE, because I believed we had to have the public weigh in, we had to hear from health sciences. And so I don't think that deferring this to a plebiscite is the act of leadership that's required from this council. So I will in no way be supporting a referral to a plebiscite.
Alderman Chabot, on the referral.
Thank you, Your Worship. Would it be possible to see it again up on the screen? Just not clear on exact wording that Alderman Jones used on his referral.
Okay. Doesn't stand, then.
Madam Clerk, is, do you have a typed version of that?
Yes.
Yeah, I just want to see the wording. And the reason I'm asking to see it, Your Worship, is I thought if somehow his referral could have been something that could be put as a question to the electorate at the next election, but dealing with the issue today and then getting some additional, I guess, reassurances from the public, I don't think I still could support it, but nonetheless, I think it would be more palatable. The way it's written here, it basically says that we continue on status quo until the next election and use that, I guess, direction from the public to determine whether or not to continue to, to continue with this procedure. I don't really think that this is something that we should even consider doing, should have never considered doing, in light of the fact that there's two things that are absolutely necessary for life, air and water. We've certainly put in all kinds of regulations in regards to the quality of air in enclosed environments, and even in those instances, there is a choice as to whether or not you want to enter those premises. When it comes to water, those people that we're talking about, that we want to protect, those people who are least able to afford to look for alternatives, i.e. bottled water or reverse osmosis to remove the fluoride from the water. If there's only one in a million people that are allergic to this product, they should not be subject to obligatory requirements by the rest of the population. So as with Alderman Farrell, I too agree that this is certainly a moral issue, that those people who can least do for themselves are the ones that we're talking about protecting, and yet they're the ones that we're punishing the most by putting this fluoride in the water. So I'm not going to be supporting the plebiscite, because I think as elected members of council, we are elected to do our due diligence. The electorate expect us to do the hard work, the heavy lifting, that they don't necessarily want to go through, and to suggest that everyone will have time between now and the next election to do their own due diligence. I'll argue that having had a very tough time when I was raising my kids, trying to keep food on the table, there was no time for me to look for extracurricular activities or looking to further inform myself on certain issues. My elected officials, I put a lot of confidence in their ability to do that heavy lifting for me. So I'm not going to support the plebiscite, and would encourage members of council not to either.
Alderman Farrell, on the referral.
Thank you. Well, I won't be supporting it, and I think I've stated the reasons why I believe plebiscites aren't appropriate for a decision of this nature. And Alderman Putman's, and Alderman McLeod kind of made the arguments for me. Alderman Putman's outlined the very reason why we shouldn't take this to plebiscite. There's no consensus on this issue. Until there's consensus, until all the jury's in about fluoride, we cannot put it in our drinking water and feel that we are doing our ethical duty. Yes, it's a difficult decision to make for a council. Alderman McLeod said that we shouldn't make these decisions for our residents. I don't believe anyone has the right to make a decision of this nature for their neighbor. And because there are viable alternatives that are, they're cheap and readily available, let's move in that direction. It's a more contemporary approach and give people the choice. And if you look at the ethics of it, Gerber Baby Food in the US now offers unfluoridated water for people who have to use formula, because babies of a certain age, infants are not supposed to have access to fluoridated water. Breast milk does not have fluoride in it. So, but the sad thing in the US is children of low-income families don't get access to Gerber baby water, because they have to purchase it. Anyway, this is going to be an interesting debate. I'm sure there's going to be another amendment. Thank you.
Alderman Putman, on the referral. I'm sorry? Okay, but just when I turn it out, okay? Alderman Kirk, call your card on the referral.
It's me. The good arguments have been made as to why we need to make a decision today. I believe it's a cop-out for elected officials and council today to not make a decision on this matter. That's why I so enjoyed the public hearing and all the folks that came forward and presented some really, really good arguments on both sides. So to me, it's a cop-out if we don't proceed. Absolutely, plebiscites do not lead to consensus. If anything, they're sort of like our debate yesterday in regards to the tunnel. It's a hung jury. It's pretty close to 50-50 all the time, and it's not a definitive choice. What disappoints me most, Your Worship, is that the province doesn't take leadership around this issue. It's the same as when we had to take on the public policy issue with regards to smoking in public places and the dangers of secondhand smoke, and all the research that is very evident about the dangers to one's health. So in the absence of any clear public policy in Alberta, obviously, they don't think it's important enough to impose this on all of the citizens across this province. They're silent on the matter, and so should we be. So today, we need to decide that we will remove fluoride from our water and not renege on our duty as elected officials to make that decision. Thank you.
Alderman Demong, on the referral.
Your Worship, if I may ask administration a question. Mr. Pritchard, you had, you and I had had conversations about the possible capital upgrade that you're referring to in the fluoride, and you had mentioned at one point that it would be easier to do the upgrade if we were not fluoridating at the time. Would you mind speaking to that?
Thank you, Your Worship. The question came up, supposing, is it easier to do the upgrade and the renovation now with an active life system versus with the system shut down and then go in and retrofit it and upgrade it? And clearly, from our point of view, the easier option is if you're not having to work around a life system, a system that's up and running, that you're having to comply with the, you know, the standards and the dosing requirements and so on, and have to keep everything running and all the procedures and safety procedures you have to go through. It would be clearly a lot easier and would suggest more cost-effective to be able to actually shut the system down and then go in there and upgrade it, you know, with nothing running.
Thank you, Mr. Pritchard. I am, as you're aware, a big...
Alderman Putman, I wonder if you'd allow me before, Mr. Pritchard, the, how long would you have to shut a system down to take a live one off and put a new one on? In other words, how long would the city be without fluoridated water?
Well, it depends how much lead time we had, because you can imagine that the process is that you have to do your RFP, engage a consultant, do the design, award a contract, tender a contract, award it, and then get the work done. And so it depends at what point we had the direction from council to do that. I mean, if you look at the minimum amount of time, it would be from the time that you've actually got a tender awarded, a contract awarded, you've got all the design done and you're ready to move in, and then you flip the switch, and then you go in and do that work. And that's, I'm guessing that's probably going to take, you know, six months or something like that. We've got two plants, you know, would you do one first and then the other? The conversation arose in the context of supposing we discontinued fluoride today and went back later, and a decision was made to start it up again, which is a slightly different question, because then you'd have to go back and get license approvals and all that part of the process as well. Typically, we would allow for a year for this kind of process from the point of view of design, construction, you know, whether the system's up and running and we're working with an existing system, or it's a sort of, we're starting from scratch. We'd probably allow ourselves a year for the whole process.
So in summary, if, once you have the design and engineering work...
Your Worship.
I'm just clarifying a question if I may. If you're...
Point of order?
That's fine. Please, carry on.
If, just to summarize your answer, Mr. Pritchard, if you had the engineering work done, shut it off, did the work, turned it on, six months.
I'm guessing, yeah, six months to a year.
Thank you. That was what I wanted. Thank you.
My point is, is that I'm a big believer in direct democracy. I'm all in favor of plebiscites. I, in reference to an amendment that I would have liked to have made to the referral, I know I'm not allowed to, I would have liked to have seen the fluoride taken out of the water over the next three years at this council meeting. And if Calgarians en masse are interested in having this fluoride put back in, we could easily, they could easily make, as Alderman Karah had mentioned, put the signatures to paper, force a plebiscite, and at that point, it would be cheaper and easier for us to reinstall the fluoride rather than doing it as an ongoing process. In the meantime, we would be saving possibly $6 to $8 million if indeed that plebiscite showed that we didn't want fluoride. For those reasons alone, I'm going to say no to this plebiscite request. I would love to see an amendment after the fact. Thank you.
On the referral, Alderman Hodges.
It's always possible to dismiss a plebiscite whenever it may be held, but in fact, this is the very issue which has been determined over the years by plebiscite, including the last one, of course. So to ignore that history, I think, is politically a mistake. We know that there isn't any public consensus on this or scientific consensus, but I don't believe that asking for a plebiscite, setting one up, is a cop-out in terms of decision-making, because indeed, as I say, this is a very issue in the history of Calgary that has been determined by a referendum plebiscite. I remember the radio discussions, now some of you weren't around for this, of course, the radio debates on radio in the late 1950s in Calgary on fluoride and the controversy about fluoride in the late 50s. So clearly, there hasn't been any consensus for a long time. However, at the end of the day, I am in favor of Alderman Jones's motion. I think it makes sense. It's been dealt with this way before, and there's no compulsion, as the, under the Municipal Government Act, that council is bound by a decision, whatever the decision may be, expressed in a plebiscite. So I think it's a good resolution, should council adopt it.
Alderman Jones, to close on the referral.
Well, Your Worship, it was an interesting debate, and it was quick. I like quick. You know, this is not my personal choice, I have to say. I'm not in favor personally of fluoride in the... I'm not in favor personally of fluoride in the water. As a matter of fact, I went to my dentist this morning, and I asked him the question, what he thought about fluoride in the water, and he says, "Well, it's kind of a mute point when you think about it," because he says, "Most people give their kids gums and candy, and if they don't brush their teeth, all the water in the world isn't gonna make the difference." So, he says, "To me, it's not a big deal." But I see the writings on the wall. I have the vote as about eight to four, depending on what Your Worship votes on, so I'll just sit down and say it's closed.
Very much. Call a roll.
Call a roll.
Recorded vote, please, council.
On the recorded vote, Your Worship. Alderman Marr against, Alderman Hodges for, Alderman Farrell against, Alderman Karah against, Alderman Collier Cart against, Alderman Chabot against, Alder Demong against, Alderman McLeod for, Alderman Pootmans for, Alderman Keating against, Alderman Stevenson against, Alderman Jones for, Alderman Lowe for.
On the main motion, Alderman McLeod.
Thank you. I would like to make a motion to refer this to a panel.
Seconded by Alderman Putman. And by that, Alderman McLeod, are you referring to the-
As offered by the University of Calgary.
Offered by the University of Calgary?
I'm not going to go into great detail. We talked about this at UNE. The university did make an offer to go through the research. I would like to add, however, I, in making this motion, I am concerned about the composition of the panel and would be very open to inclusion of a variety of people as reflected by the presentations that we've had. I don't want, I want scientific for sure, I want it substantive research for sure, but I also want it to be inclusive of all thoughts on the issue. And I think some people have expressed interest that that would include ethics as well as alternative medicines and some of those sorts of things as well.
Okay, and Alderman McLeod, in your close, I'm gonna ask you how you might see the panel being formed, how you would constitute this panel, because the offer from the university is quite specific. So, I'm gonna ask you just to consider that in your close, if you will.
I'm afraid I don't have the university's letter here with me, so I can't respond to that. If it is specific, I would like to see it inclusive. And I think if we're gonna do a panel, that it must absolutely be viewed as being credible by all sides.
Okay, thank you. On the referral, Alderman Keating.
Once again, I was gonna speak to amendment, but I will go down this route. I really believe that we heard credible testimony the last time, and I, coming back to my statement where a medical doctor summarized the evidence and is pro-fluoride, but he simply stated, "The best they can do is it's likely to be a benefit and unlikely to be a harm." And I'm not sure what another panel will do other than that. Thank you. I will not support it.
On the referral, Alderman Putman.
Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you, Your Worship. I guess, speaking for myself, I just don't feel I have the, perhaps have the political authority and legal authority, but I certainly don't feel I have the moral authority or the scientific knowledge to be making this decision and would crave the generously offered expertise of the university and would very much like to support this motion. Thank you, Your Worship.
On the referral, Alderman Marr.
Well, I struggled with this one, not because of the scientific nature, but as to whether or not the panel would be made up of philosophical majors when they could come at us with the idea as to whether or not this is right or wrong. We are making a decision that is ethical in nature. Does the majority have the right to impose its will and mass-medicate a million people? I don't believe that that is the case. I think that we are doing something here that has an opportunity to once again bring back clean, natural water without mass-medicating people without their consent, so I will not be supporting this. Thank you.
On the referral, Alderman Karah.
In my sort of interrupted debate last time, I sort of sputtered out the idea that this is really sort of a referendum on public health. And I think that the U of C, putting together an expert panel is a very interesting idea, but we've seen these super panels put together before, and they've been basically biomedical ethics and health sciences panels that operate within the frame of reference and the philosophy of biomedical ethics and health sciences. And I think that this is an issue that perhaps transcends that. I think there are three areas that have to be represented if we're gonna bring anything new to the table. As Alderman Marr said, an ethical position outside of the realm of biomedical ethics. It's a philosophical proposition, and it's something I think that's fairly defining for our time, for better or for worse. I think it's a political science question of considerable significance, given the current, given the current downloading and the nature of municipalities within the context of provincial and federal governments across North America, and the fact that municipal governments are the level of government closest to people but also the most disenfranchised, the areas in which most of our wealth is created but, which don't see a lot of value for that. And then the final thing is, I think it's an environmental issue, and there are tremendous number of externalities that are in no way being addressed at the biomedical ethics level. And if we could put together a panel that's credible, that approaches this with fresh eyes, with a health sciences and a biomedical ethic component as well, I would be very supportive of that kind of panel. But I don't see that being on the table, and I don't see that coming to the forefront. And as a matter of fact, I think a decision today might force that kind of panel to come together and to convene and to add something new to this debate. So, you know, in the spirit of the fact that I'm responding to what I see as a considerable feeling within a significant amount of the electorate, to really challenge the assumptions of the past, I will not be supporting the panel as currently construed. I don't see it coming together, but I see a decision today provoking that kind of panel that might actually add something meaningful to the debate or something new to the debate. So, I will not be supporting this one.
On the referral, Alderman Demong.
The simple concept that you're asking it to go to a medical panel goes to the point that this is a medical question, which is not, which is not what this council is here for. I encourage wholeheartedly that this university set up this medical panel, go right ahead, do this, take their findings to the province, and have the province do what they're supposed to be doing, and that is with regards to medical. Thank you.
On the referral, Alderman Stevenson.
Thank you, Your Worship. No, I will not be supporting this. I believe that we have the research. We've been, many of us have been studying it for many years, and I don't think a panel that actually puts the research into a nice package and sending it to us is going to do any good, so I will not support it.
On the referral, Alderman Chabot.
Well, Your Worship, honestly, based on what I see before me, I really don't see what it's doing. It says that the issue of fluoride be referred to a panel as suggested by University of Calgary's letter at the hearing on January 26, 2011. Now, if council approves this, my question then is, it really doesn't do anything to the recommendations that are before us. So, then are we still debating this issue? I'm not sure how this motion was even accepted because it's not referring to the report that's before us. It's kind of somewhat out of order.
I would suggest, Alderman Chabot, that, and just for your information, I'm gonna read the operative paragraph in the university's letter, if I may. "I propose that our faculty support the city by striking the group which could draw on the expertise of our new Calgary Institute for Population and Public Health to critically review the most up-to-date scientific literature and provide clear, evidence-based answers to questions about risk and benefit of water fluoride. I would ensure that members of the new review committee would be experts in public health and scientific methodology. This group would be able to provide a report to you within weeks." So, I would suggest that what we've referred, we would want a date, and I would ask Alderman McLeod for a date when we could have it back and-
Okay, respectfully, Your Worship. I'm not concerned about the letter. I've read that letter. I actually watched the video of the entire proceedings that took place here. I also took part in this debate in my last term, so I've been pretty, you know, pretty familiar with all of the issues of both pro and against. What I'm saying here is procedurally, Your Worship, what I see before me is a referral. It says referral. I'm not sure what exactly it says. It doesn't say, "Refer this report." It just says, "Refer the issue of fluoride." What's before us is not the issue of fluoride. What's before us is whether or not we want to continue to put fluoride in our water. It's not whether or not fluoride is a benefit to us or not. It's whether or not we want to put fluoride in our water. So, this referral motion, in my opinion, is not properly put and should be refused on the basis of the fact that it's not properly put, quite simply. So, I can't support it, for many reasons, that being one of them.
On the referral, Alderman McLeod to close.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Alderman Chabot. I think the motion does need some work. So, the issue of the, it says, "As suggested in University Calgary's letter," and that refers to evidence-based answers as, with experts in public health and scientific methodology. So, I don't think that excludes the kinds of people that I was talking about in terms of creating the panel. However, it would seem that there is no support for this, and so I will close. Thank you.
Just, is this referral of a referral? No, no. No, it's not. Okay. And on referral, we call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Keating.
No.
Alderman McLeod?
Yes.
Alderman Marr?
No.
Alderman Pootmans?
Yes.
Alderman Stevenson?
No.
Alderman Karah?
No.
Alderman Chabot?
No.
Alderman Collier Cart?
No.
Alderman Demong?
No.
Alderman Farrell?
No.
Alderman Hodges?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Lowe?
Yes.
Lost, Your Worship.
On the main motion, Alderman Keating.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm learning how to play Jeopardy, and I think I was fast enough that time to continue with an amendment. If we can have the amendment up, please. I strongly believe that fluoride is a benefit, and I strongly believe that we need to do something in this area for those who need it. I am against the idea of a garden hose or a fire hose approach to try and identify and help those who need it. So, the second part of this motion is crucial, in my view. Taking it away and not doing something else in return defeats the purpose of what we're here for. And so, I have amended the second part slightly to make the wording, I guess, a little more open, but I do hope that you would support this in the fact that we are here to help those that most need it rather than the approach that we've been taking with fluoride. Fluoride is a benefit, but if done correctly. Thank you.
On the amendment. Do we have a printed copy, Your Worship, off? No, we don't.
Have a very second or?
On the amendment, are we agreed? Oh, Alderman, Collier Cart.
Your Worship, Your Worship, could I have a second or, please?
Seconded by Alderman Jones. Thank you. I can't hear you.
Okay.
Speak up.
I have an amendment, Your Worship.
An amendment.
I just wanna clean it up a little bit. So, and further be it resolved that council direct administration to establish a stakeholder group to identify options to address the dental health of children living in poverty. So, we want to see the options in order to, I don't know if it needs to be improved, but to address dental health issues. So, to address dental health issues. Issues after health.
Did I hear a second or?
Yes, second.
Thank you. Is that okay, Alderman Keating? Okay.
On the amendment to the amendment, I'll just run through the lights in this case. Alderman Jones?
Yes, Your Worship. The only problem I've got with this is why do the children have to be living in poverty? Why can't it be identify options to address the best way to improve dental health issues for children, period? Cut the poverty. Can I take poverty out?
I don't think we can go that far procedurally. Do an amendment to an amendment.
I think identifying it in children is more important than just saying identifying it, children living in poverty.
You can't. You have to defeat this one and then, timeout, okay.
We'd have to vote on the amendment. You can't have two amendments to the amendment on the floor at the same time. So, either Alderman Collier Cart can accept that or not, but you'd have to vote on the one, and then you can amend it again afterwards.
Exactly.
So, I'll stand with Alderman Jones and just say that what we heard in the debate was that one of the arguments for keeping fluoride in is that-
I think, Alderman Collier Cart, is this your close and your amendment?
She's answering my question, Your Worship.
He was wondering if it was friendly, that I would take out poverty. And so, I'm just saying that that's what we heard to address the reason why fluoride's in there is because of children living in poverty that can't afford other means. So, it's not very friendly.
Well, I guess-
I would suggest that you just ask, "Could that word be called separately?" Thank you.
I don't know how you can call a word separately. The issue that I have with it, Your Worship, is what is poverty and where are you gonna divide the line?
Michael.
I know you do, but there's a lot of people that may want to participate.
We could, one speaker at a time. Thank you very much.
Well, I'm standing, so I'm alone speaking.
You are standing. Comments are addressed across the way.
Oh. Yeah. Okay, you guys over there, be glad. Now, you've made me forget what my issue was. Anyway, children living in poverty, one is identifying where the poverty line is, and there may be a lot of people that may want to partake in it that aren't in poverty. And I think we should give every opportunity to the people that wanted to have fluoride for their children, have that right rather than just dealing with this issue.
On the amendment to the amendment, Alderman Chabot.
Yeah, well, I have no problem with what's proposed before us, except to the extent that it's not really a municipal responsibility. We're kind of accepting a municipal, we're accepting a provincial responsibility and imposing municipal taxes to try and resolve an issue that ultimately should be taken care of by the provincial government. And I think to suggest that we continue to do this in perpetuity is not right. I think to establish a stakeholder group, identify different options is, it's a very laudable goal. and imposing municipal taxes to try and resolve an issue that ultimately should be taken care of by the provincial government. And I think to suggest that we continue to do this in perpetuity is not right. I think to establish a stakeholder group, identify different options is, it's a, it's a very laudable goal. Something that if we want to undertake, I guess it'd be the will of this council. But insofar as continuing this process and whatever the findings of that, I guess, review or undertaking determines ultimately should not be our responsibility. So I think there should be a term limit imposed on how long we're going to continue to do this, if we're going to do it at all. And being as there's an amendment to the amendment that's currently on the floor, we will vote on the amendment to the amendment. And following that vote, the outcome of that vote, should it be favorable, I would like to propose that we put in a term limit to what's being proposed here as an additional amendment to the amendment. Or vote on the entire thing, and then I'll put it forward as an amendment after the fact. Either way, whatever the process that you'd like to undertake, your worship, I will take your, your worthy advice on when I should properly be putting this, and we'll sit on that point. Thank you.
We have to get these out of the way, Alderman Chabot. On the amendment to the amendment, Alderman Karah. On the amendment to the amendment, Alderman Farrell.
Thank you. I'll speak to both of them. I'll support the amendment to the amendment, and I don't mind the idea of looking at a limit. I think it probably should also come back to council what the structure of this is, if, if there's going to be a financial commitment. What we heard from members of the public who were advocates of fluoridation was that it's children living in poverty who are going through a dental health crisis. The interesting thing is, in the U.S., the cities that have the biggest dental health crisis are the cities that have been fluoridating for decades. So it's, it's not a panacea. What I'm suggesting with this amendment, or this original motion, is that we look at something more meaningful, something that looks at health. And we are also learning that it's really health, diet, hygiene that make the biggest difference. So let's make a big difference if we can. And so rather than completely abdicating, abdicating our responsibility, I'm suggesting we actually take real responsibility. Because it's, it's an impression of mine that once we fluoridate, kind of wipe our hands of the issue, and we're, we're done with it, and I don't think we are.
On the amendment to the amendment, that was put by Alderman Collier-Curt to close. Close. On the amendment to the amendment, did you call a roll, Madam Clerk?
The amendment to the amendment, your worship, was moved by Collier-Curt, seconded by Alderman Marr. May I call the roll now, your worship? Thank you. Alderman McLeod?
Agreed.
Alderman Marr?
Yep.
Alderman Pootmans? Sorry, your worship, he wasn't in the chair. Alderman Stevenson?
Yes.
Alderman Karah?
Yes.
Alderman Chabot? Alderman Collier-Curt?
Yes.
Alderman Demong?
Yes.
Alderman Farrell?
Yes.
Alderman Hodges?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alderman Keating?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Lowe?
No.
Carrie, your worship.
On the motion as amended, Alderman Stevenson.
Well, your worship, I, I supported that amendment because I thought it was better than what we had before, but...
This is actually on the amendment, Alderman Stevenson. I just called it wrong.
Okay, so it's on the amendment?
Yeah.
Do I have a time limit? Okay. Anyway, I have, I have a concern because there's, there's so, this is so open-ended. We're saying direct administration to establish this group, and then we talk about an amount of money to be saved, taken from the amount of monies that we're saving. What, there's nothing that says this comes back to council for approval. There's nothing that says how much money they can spend. Are they going to spend $6 million? What are they, what are they going to do with this? So I'm, I'm thinking that somehow we have to amend this, that we ask them to bring us back a, a plan for this, something to that effect. You got one? Okay. I'll leave it to my... No, I'll just say my colleague, Mr., Mr. Alderman Chabot.
On the amendment, Alderman Chabot.
Thank you, your worship. I would like to propose an additional amendment, and I haven't finalized all the wording to it because I, I wasn't sure exactly how or what we should do with this, with the findings of this process. We've identified the source of funds. It's to be taken from the money saved from no longer administering it, and we, we more or less have a number there. Might I correct Mr. Pritchard?
I would need a little bit more clarification from council on that. It doesn't really, it says in an amount. It doesn't say the full amount.
Taken from the monies, taken from the money saved from the discontinuation of fluoridation.
Well, I would, I would appreciate further direction from council, I think, on that. Does it include capital money? The one-time capital saving or ongoing operating, and is it in perpetuity, so?
I, I think the intent was probably from operating, so it would, it probably should have been stated that way. Save from the dis, money saved from the dis, from the operational discontinuation.
I think what the words you're trying to insert is money saved from the operational budget, operating budget. The amount of...
But money is realized from the operating budget.
Well, you're looking, you're looking for changes or savings in the operating budget due to the discontinuation of fluoridation, which I think, Mr. Pritchard, is about $500,000.
Money saved from the operating budget due to discontinuation of fluoridation.
Your worship, if it, in the amount taken from the operating, operational monies, save from the discontinuation of fluoride, and if it's all of the operational monies, then it's around $750,000 a year.
Okay, so that, that puts a bracket on it.
There should have been some additional direction there as well in regards to what, what the limit is. Up to, whatever that limit is, but nonetheless, just putting it as it is, I think, is sufficient. However, and where does it go? Where do the findings of this study go? I think that's what's primarily missing, what Alderman Stevenson was referring to. And, and it should be returning back to council through SPC on UNE. And here's where I struggled with the... Oh, Community Protective Services. You think that'd be better?
That was hilarious. Absolutely hilarious.
You know what?
Erica, do that again.
Okay, could we make sure our mics are off, except when we're speaking? Thank you.
So this would be after the discontinuation of fluoridation and return to council through SPC. I still believe it's an environmental, well, no, it's not really an environmental, it is, it is certainly, should be, see, Community Protective Services. I agree with you, Alderman Farrell. And return to council through SPC on CPS, Community Protective Services, with recommendations.
Taken is in there twice.
Sorry.
Taken from the savings of the operating budget.
Yeah, that second taken thereafter budget should be probably taken on.
And savings should precede operating budget.
Taken from the savings in the operating budget.
From the discontinued operating budget.
Yeah, Alderman Chabot, do you need a few minutes to sit down and compose this? Because we, we most certainly can move on to other items.
The, the first part of my proposal, your worship respectfully, was to correct some of the wording in the previous motion. My amendment was predominantly to give it direction as to where it should go and, and what the, what those recommendations entail. Now, because there was some reference to the fact that it wasn't clearly, clearly identified what the savings were, from where they were taken, that's the reason I tried to do some of this, other amendments in the, in the, in the body of the, of the amendment. But I think, Madam Clerk, you probably correct the wording to reflect our intent without my, or any of members of council's input on it. Madam Clerk, do we have it?
No.
Your worship, is Alderman Chabot asking me to...
Draft up my motion?
Read this line?
No.
Yeah, Alderman Chabot.
Let me just read it. Dental health of children living in poverty and an amount to be taken from the savings from the operating budget. Taken from the operating budget.
Was it good enough?
From the discontinuation of fluoridation and return to council. I, I don't think there's anything wrong with the wording. Now, if somebody doesn't like the wording, of course, they can certainly amend it to better reflect what they think it is that I'm trying to put forward.
This is an amendment to the amendment, Alderman.
Yes, once we voted down, once we voted on this, that somebody can then subsequently make further amendments.
That's true.
I think it's fine the way it is, with recommendations to... Just with recommendations, I think, is fine. I'll just leave it at that.
Do I have a second for this?
No later than, I guess you're right. No later than what? December 2011? Yeah, so it will have to be November. No later than November 2011, your worship, so that we can include it in our three-year budgetary cycle discussion.
Seconded by Alderman Collier-Curt. On the amendment to the amendment. On the amendment to the amendment. Did you call a roll, Madam Clerk?
Alderman Marr?
Yes.
Alderman Pootmans?
No.
Alderman Stevenson?
Yes.
Alderman Karah?
Yes.
Alderman Chabot?
Reluctantly, yes.
Alderman Collier-Curt? Alderman Demong?
Yes.
Alderman Farrell?
Yes.
Alderman Hodges?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
No.
I'm sorry? Alderman Keating?
Yes.
Alderman McLeod?
Yes.
Alder, Deputy Mayor Lowe?
No.
Carrie, your worship.
Okay, on the amendment, which I believe was placed by Alderman Collier-Curt, Alderman Stevenson.
Your worship, I think that there needs to be something else in between administer, administration to establish a stakeholder group because isn't, shouldn't, aren't we looking for a plan to establish a stakeholder group? We don't want to direct them to actually put that forward. We're asking them to bring to us a plan for to put this all in place, are we not? So if, if we were to put, and further be resolved that council direct administration to bring us a plan to establish a stakeholder group, would that, because we don't want, we're not telling them to go out and establish the stakeholder group yet at this point, are we, your worship?
Alderman Stevenson, you have the floor?
Okay, well, I'm, I'm a little confused, as nobody's surprised at that. But I'm, I thought what we were doing was, was directing, maybe, Mr. Tobert, could you help me on this?
Well, this is an awful long time to prepare a plan. We're not supposed to report back to November. So my thinking was the implication here was to do more than prepare a plan. It was set up the committee, study the issue, bring back recommendations in November. That's the way I interpret what's written.
Okay, then I stand corrected. Thank you.
Alderman Pootman?
Thank you, your worship. Just very quickly, I'm not quite sure I understand the intent. I believe we have a budget of approximately $750,000. What if the plan was to actually cost more than that? What's the intent of this motion? Is it to spend what's needed or to spend to an amount of $750,000 at the maximum?
Mr. Tobert?
It's pretty hard to have savings more than what's in the budget, your worship.
No, no, what I'm suggesting is that, this to me is if we're setting up a plan in an amount to be taken from savings. Is the plan maximum going to be $750,000? What if this problem is much more than that?
Your worship, we know the problem is much bigger than this, but we're limited by how much we save.
Which is, which is actually a pretty important, important part to make for those that are concerned about dental hygiene and health of youngsters. I think it's, I'll deliver, begin with a little bit tongue-in-cheek, but at the end of the day, if that's the response, then I think we have a different kind of obligation here with this amendment, which is to address the general health care of those youngsters that perhaps are in some peril now of not having the type of dental health they might otherwise have enjoyed. That's not on the table.
Your worship, if I might, this is stepping onto a slippery slope, though. Because to date, we've limited ourselves to the savings that we've identified with fluoridation being removed. There's nothing to stop certain interest groups from lobbying us to increase that, once you step on the slope.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk. So we're down now to the amendment, is that right? The amendment as amended, and who, that was Alderman Keating to close. Go ahead.
I, I do want to address a couple of issues that have come up since the beginning of this amendment. And it was the intent that this is a targeted approach to helping those young children who need the fluoride rather than the fire hose of spraying it on everybody and hoping that those people get the benefits. The word poverty, in, in my view, is quite crucial to some degree because those children who see dentists, who brush their teeth, do not need this program. Those children who don't have that capability, for whatever reasons, do need it. And therefore, we're asking that resources be, I once again, sort of whitewashed or broad-based across there rather than the targeted approach that it was identified to be. I, I do also have a little bit of the problem of just pushing it off to the side and saying it's a provincial responsibility because I'd, I'd like to say we're here to help, period. And if we use the idea of the parable, I mean, the Good Samaritan did not decide whose responsibility it was. They actually just did it. And I think in some cases, that was what we need to do. The limit is from the savings of the budget, the $750,000, and that's the end of the story. If the plan is bigger, that's where we have to get into that other debate of when is the province going to come forward and help out. But at this point, we're realizing a savings, but the savings was, in my view, not the intent. It was to make a benefit that is better than we have now, and this motion, I believe, does that, so I hope you support it.
Okay, and if you'll allow me, I happen to agree with Alderman Jones. You're either doing it for kids or you're not. Would you call a roll, please, Madam Clerk, on the amendment?
Alderman McLeod?
Agreed.
Alderman Marr? Alderman Pootmans?
No.
Alderman Stevenson?
Yes.
Alderman Karah?
Yes.
Alderman Chabot?
Yes.
Alderman Collier-Curt?
Yes.
Alderman Demong?
Yes.
Alderman Farrell?
Yes.
Alderman Hodges? I'm sorry, Alderman Hodges?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Alderman Jones? Alderman Keating?
Yes.
Alderman Lowe?
No.
Pardon me, Deputy Mayor Lowe?
No.
Thank you.
Sorry, Alderman Marr?
So we're, we're on the main, the main motion now, are we not?
No, no.
We're still on the amendment. Okay, sorry, sorry.
On the main, it's carried. Thank you. On the main motion as amended, Alderman Farrell to close.
Thank you. I won't belabor this. We've been through this debate many times.
We haven't debated the main motion. It was on and it got turned off.
Here, I'll put your lights on for you.
We have not debated the main motion.
Okay. I keep telling people, turn on your lights, so turn on your lights. Alderman Karah on the main motion.
All right, thank you very much. I want to start by saying that I think it's undeniable that fluoride is a positive for dental health. I think what's at stake here are two issues, and number one is whether fluoridation is the best delivery method, and then the entire system in which we make the decision as to whether fluoridation is the best delivery method. Now, I think there is a... Now, I think there is a majority of the population of Calgary that deeply doesn't care one way or the other. But I think there's a growing minority of the population, and a significant minority, that cares very deeply, and I think the overwhelming majority of that significant and growing minority is against fluoridation. And I think that that's a really interesting and problematic proposition. Now, I want to state that I am a fan of public health. But I'm deeply concerned that public health is seriously on the ropes. It's, it does not have the cachet that it had when it rose up and it eradicated things like smallpox, when it rose up and eradicated things like tuberculosis and polio. And I think that that's partially because we're living fat on an era of plenty. I think it's partially because we're starving out our public health, but I also think that it's partially because public health is sort of an old-school model that is not adaptive to new and growing sort of philosophies within the population. And I'm not entirely a hundred percent supportive, maybe, of some of these philosophies. Alderman McLeod stated that it's not really our job to address issues of public health and that we should defer it to the population as a whole for a, for a plebiscite. I'm actually of the opinion that when we make decisions on planning matters, on land use matters, we are addressing public health decisions in a much more meaningful way, in a much more significant way than we do over the issue of fluoridation. And I think that sort of systems approach has to sort of come to the floor, has to sort of, I think that's part of the new era. I think a potential danger of this new era and this new approach that we're talking about is an atomized, individualistic population that's disconnected from any sort of responsibility to the whole. And I think that that negative, that potential negative is attached to things that we do with regards to land use and planning. So I am, I have heard from the population very significantly that... Why are we getting so much feedback here? Is your mic on?
Not me, oh, it's...
Okay. I'm hearing, I've heard loud and clear from the population that the majority of people who care about this matter do not want their water fluoridated, and they feel that it's not the majority or the state's job to impose on their bodies. And so I think that we need to move forward with public health in a way that addresses this new reality, addresses the strengths of it, and also addresses the weaknesses of it. And I think it's an interesting time, but I will be supporting this motion because I think that we have to acknowledge this time and the population and, and sort of the ethical landscape in which we live in. So, and I'm also not a fan of sort of, to use Alderman Keating's phrase, fire hose approaches. So I will be supporting this motion.
Alderman Stevenson, on the motion.
Thank you, Your Worship. Well, there's, there's, even if we accept the fact that there is benefit to the teeth with the topical application of fluoride, there's no, nobody is telling us to swallow it. In fact, we go to great lengths to make sure that toothpaste is not swallowed, and of course, at the, at the dentist, they certainly do a lot to make sure you don't swallow the fluoride there. And we have the same situation with sunscreen. That's, of course, good for the skin, but we certainly wouldn't want to ingest it. So it's something that we have to look at and say, is there a benefit to us drinking this fluoride? And the answer is definitely no. What's happening is that, like, the National Research Council now is acknowledging that kidney patients, diabetics, seniors, and babies are to be susceptible subpopulations that are particularly vulnerable to harm from ingested fluorides. I think there is so much evidence now that this fluoride has a potential to do harm, and we don't have anything, as I asked the doctors when we had them at committee, if there was any proof of any benefit to Calgarians from fluoride. And no one seems to be able to provide any proof that there's a benefit. And there's no question, some are being harmed. There's all kinds of movements around the North American continent and across the world to remove fluoride. I don't know of any that's being put in. The reason is because there's more and more evidence all the time. So we, as a council, have to show some leadership here, and we have no right to force this on all Calgarians. I would really question our right to put it in, but I have absolutely no right to, I don't question at all our right to remove it. If it is proven to be safe in the future, we can revisit it, but we definitely, council should be taking this out. Thank you, Your Worship.
Alderman Farrell, you're to close. Alderman Putman on the main motion.
Thank you, Your Worship. To address Alderman Karah directly on this point, the, I don't, I would not posit this as a minority rights issue. I think that, as you put it, there are indeed probably minorities, I would suggest, for the removal, and I would venture to suggest maybe a minority group that is, is for maintaining fluoride, and a majority of people, I would agree, are probably perhaps indifferent. Going to a plebiscite is not a particularly appealing solution, but in the end, I think that there's a risk-benefit analysis at work here, and I think only the population can make that decision. Do the benefits outweigh the risks of fluoride? And for that reason, among others, I believe that I will have to not support this resolution and sit down. Thank you.
To run the main motion, Alderman McLeod.
Thank you. I'm not going to go into great length about the details on fluoride. I think most of that's been said either in committee or here today. We've read lots of emails and books and research abstracts, and now we're going to make a decision like we're scientists and we understand it. I, I guess the, I'm sorry?
It's all right, Alderman McLeod.
I, one of the things that has deeply concerned me about this debate, and Alderman Karah and I have had this conversation, he raised it as well, is the attitude towards public health officials. And I'm deeply concerned that our public health officials are being labeled as pro-fluoride. These people are scientists and doc, medical practitioners, whose job it is to look at evidence and to make decisions in the broad, best interest of public health. I think to frame them in a political context is completely inappropriate. They drink the same water as we do, and I don't think they're motivated by any ill will. I think that they, they are informed and they have to make decisions, whether it be medical decisions or public health, broad public health decisions, in the best interest of the public on balance and not doing individual harm or minority rights issues, as was mentioned earlier. And that's the only point I want to make in closing. Thank you.
Alderman Jones on the main motion.
Well, you're pleased to know I'm going to make an amendment. Your Worship, prior to what I said, I think this is health issues for all children, not those, just those living in poverty, so I'd like to strike "living in poverty" and end it at children.
Do we have a second, Alderman McLeod? Thank you. On the amendment. Let's go through my lights here. Alderman Farrell on the amendment.
Thank you. I can't support this amendment. I think that certainly the arguments that we hear from public health officials is the major reason we need to do this because children who are living in poverty don't have access to appropriate dental care. And so...
Is it contrary?
I'm not sure if it's contrary.
No, I don't think it's...
It isn't, no? All right. So, no, I think then, then we really are entering fields that we don't belong in. I think we're on the verge, frankly, but I'm prepared to enter into another's territory, healthcare territory, if we're talking about children living in poverty, because no one else is looking after them in this area. So I, I can't support it.
Alderman Demong on the amendment. Alderman Marr on the amendment. Alderman Keating on the amendment.
I would just like to, again, follow up with the reasons why that was in there in the first place. There are thousands of children within Calgary who do not need this program. On the flip side, there are thousands of children who need this program, and I think we have to go back to that targeted approach and make sure that they are the ones getting it and not a broad base. Thank you.
Alderman McLeod on the amendment.
My reason for supporting this is that it's not because I don't think the children living in poverty probably have a higher need, but they're not the only ones with need. It's another means test. They're being separated out at school as being the poor kids that get dental care. I think there's a variety of issues around that. I'm not sure how, how well we can administer that, and it adds a complexity that I'm not sure is, is appropriate.
Thank you. I got lights going on and off here like crazy. On, I believe that's everybody, on the, you closed, Alderman Jones? Thank you very much. On the amendment, are we agreed? Are there any opposed? Call a roll, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Pootmans. Alderman Stevenson.
Yes.
Alderman Karah.
No.
Alderman Chabot.
No.
Alderman Collyer-Cart.
No.
Alderman Demong.
No.
Alderman Farrell.
No.
Alderman Hodges. Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Alderman Keating.
No.
Alderman McLeod.
Yes.
Alderman Marr.
No.
Deputy Mayor Low.
Yes.
Lost, Your Worship, six, seven.
Who do we have left on the motions? Alderman Demong on the motion, main motion.
Simply put, to me, the fluoride, concept of fluoride in the water or not is a medical issue, and, and it should be placed directly on the mantle of the level of government that's responsible for the, for medical issues, and that is the province. We have a dwindling amount of money that the city is able to be, to use in its ongoing operations, and to me, fluoride is not an area that we should be dealing with. It's, it's something that should be placed to the province, and I think it's up to everybody in the, in the province to make them aware of this. Thank you.
Alderman Marr on the main motion.
Sorry, thank you. I agree with a lot of the debate that's gone along here, and I think it's very, very healthy. There's two opposing sides, and we're very, very passionate about this issue. Fundamentally, I believe that this is an ethical question. I believe that this is an obligation of another order of government, and we are undertaking it. We can't afford to do it. I believe that this is also mass medication, as I've said before, without consent, and we need to get rid of it now. Thank you.
Alderman Keating on the main motion.
Thank you, Your Worship. Coming back, and I really like the idea. We had a comment here about the public health officials having to make decisions, and I think that was correct. They made a decision on a broad-based treatment of a dental or oral hygiene. The other thing, though, is with this motion, it offers a different decision that can be made, and in my view, a much better decision than the alternative. So I will support it. Thank you.
Alderman Jones on the main motion.
Should I make another one? No. Your Worship, all I, all I want you to do is call the two, therefore be resolved separately.
I will. Alderman Farrell to close.
Thank you. Well, I know we're all tired. We were here very late, and it's been a couple of very emotional days. I just want to thank council for listening, for talking, and members of the public who obviously care very deeply. And this debate that we've had in this room is really a microcosm of debate that's being held in many cities around the world and will continue to be held for many years to come. So I would appreciate your support. Thank you.
And Madam Clerk, I've been asked to do a recorded vote, so I'm going to call a recorded vote on the first resolution.
Your Worship, on the recorded vote, Alderman Marr for, Alderman Hodges for, Alderman Farrell for, Alderman Karah for, Alderman Collyer-Cart for, Alderman Chabot for, Alderman Demong for, Alderman McLeod against, Alderman Pootmans against, Alderman Keating for, Alderman Stevenson for, Alderman Jones for, Deputy Mayor Low against. It's carried.
Call a vote, again, recorded on the second resolution, Madam Clerk. Or, sorry, recorded vote, yeah.
On the vote, Your Worship, Alderman Marr for, Alderman Hodges for, Alderman Farrell for, Alderman Karah for, Alderman Collyer-Cart for, Alderman Chabot for, Alderman Demong against, Alderman McLeod for, Alderman Pootmans for, Alderman Keating for, Alderman Stevenson against, Alderman Jones against, Deputy Mayor Low against. It's carried, Your Worship.
And council, on the third recommendation to receive the public submissions, are we agreed?
Agreed.
Are there any opposed? I see none, that's carried, thank you very much. Counsel, it takes us to audit. Alderman Collyer-Cart, are you moving both? The recommendations of audit two eleven oh three and oh four? I'm sorry, two eleven oh seven. On the recommendations in audit two eleven oh three, are we agreed? Are there any opposed? I see. Sorry? Oh, I'm sorry, who seconded that? I believe it was Alderman, no, McLeod. On audit two eleven oh seven, the audit's work plan, are we agreed? Somebody late on? Oh, Alderman Putman, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Alderman Putman?
Thank you, Worship. I'm not sure, can anybody speak to a detailed question on this report? It came up at committee, and I was hoping to get an answer at council. I'm not sure, GM Stevens, I believe, could you try? Thank you. It's a pretty minor matter, but I look for symptoms and complicated evidence of, of interest. On nine four one page, or packet page nine five one, it's a table, it's a chart of, of costs and IT staff counts and IT software costs.
Well, we've, we're by that one, I'm afraid.
No, that's what I wanted to ask. I was up for it, and it just, I wasn't recognized. So we agreed to deal with this. I asked, and you said yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I did not see your light on when I called the question, Alderman Putman. Go ahead.
Thank, thank you, thank you for your relaxation. It's, it's curious, the total IT costs for the dollars per user in Calgary, city of Calgary is ten thousand, ten thousand, eleven thousand dollars, so relative... So relatively low, low end of the cost spectrum, dollars per user. Yet, for the City of Calgary, staff counts are, are high, and software counts are high. And I was wondering what other input is particularly low that would enable us to have such a low cost per user? It's just as evidence of a disconnect that I'm wondering what, what that's telling us.
So I see where you're picking up $10,000. It's on the extreme sort of north or west, east, west corner of the page. It says total IT cost, and then under total IT staff count?
At 18.
You've got 18. So there is a lot of IT staff who do project capital work. Some paid for under capital budgets that are within IT. A lot, though, are paid for by IT budgets that are within the business units. There is an awful lot of business development going on.
That would not be part of the IT cost as in the first chart?
Yes.
Thank you, and I would assume the same logic would apply to the total IT software cost. There might be costs, this is capturing costs from units. That would explain it.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Perfect.
Are you content with that, Alderman Putman?
Yes, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Moving on then to 21107. Are, on the recommendations, are we agreed? Are there any opposed? I see none. Thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry. You know, that's why we have lights. Oh, just opposed? Now, did somebody over there have questions? Okay. Those opposed, please. Alderman Chabot, thank you very much. Takes us to notices of motion. Extending the free fare zone. Alderman, who wants to present this? Alderman Jones, Alderman Collier Cart, or Alderman Chabot? Alderman Chabot?
Trying to use my lights, your worship.
Good.
Yeah, members of council, this is something that has been debated previously. And, and that's extending the LRT free fare zone to Stampede Station, or to the first station, not to both stations. I think there's some suggestion that we're intending on, on extending the free fare zone to both stations at the Stampede grounds, but actually, the intent is only to extend it to the first. And it is represented in the notice of motion. The, I guess the main reason that we're looking at doing this, your worship, is that tourism has had an opportunity to review, and, and pardon me, your worship, I did forget to mention, I do have 35 copies of, of letters, actually 33 now, because myself and Alderman Collier Cart have a copy that if Madam Clerk could distribute with letters of support from Tourism Calgary as well as from Calgary Economic Development, that I think would help to contribute to the discussion. And with your permission, your worship, wouldn't mind if these could be distributed to members of council. And it talks about some of the issues that we're facing today and the ability for us to attract larger events, larger trade shows, and larger conventions. And the fact that maybe our Telus Convention Centre is undersized. And of course, members of council have heard this before, that we probably should have a much larger facility to accommodate some of the needs, especially in light of the size of our city. But because of the BMO Centre at the round, in Stampede grounds, we have significantly greater capacity when we combine the two facilities. And in the past, we've had a couple of events, such as Rendezvous Canada, that came to Calgary with about 2,000 delegates in 2009. And that in itself pretty much confirms the value of providing that free fare zone flow because of how successful that event was. What we're looking to do is provide a positive contribution or positive environment for trade shows and conventions to come to the city and, and see this as a seamless kind of a mechanism to move to and from their hotel as well as to their venue or between venues. If it's a combined facility type of attraction that we're providing. And this would, of course, provide some greater synergy between the Telus Convention Centre as well as the BMO Centre at the Stampede grounds. And there's been some talk also, your worship, about the loss of revenue. And albeit that there may be increased volume on the system, the system will operate one way or another, whether it's full or whether it's empty. And if we are doing it for the purpose of increasing the opportunity at the BMO Centre in the Stampede grounds predominantly, and the majority of the people that will be participating in the events will either be driving there, or will be going from the hotels here in the downtown core to the BMO Centre and in the mornings to go to the event. And conversely, in the evenings, when the events are concluded, they'll be coming from the BMO Centre to the hotels in the downtown. Therefore, thereby actually predominantly moving in a reverse traffic movement as opposed to where the majority of the people are moving in those peak hours. The peak hours, as we all know, the majority of the people are coming from their residential homes into the downtown. They're therefore going northbound, whereas most of the people going to the Convention Centre from the downtown will be going southbound in the early mornings and in the reverse direction in the evenings. Now, not going to dispute that there's going to be probably increased congestions during the course of the day. But as we all know, the train is running regardless, whether it's full or empty. So in light of the fact that it's going to contribute, not only from a tourism perspective in regards to how it could potentially attract more people to this city if we can offer larger events and more people coming to the city and, and in essence, becoming ambassadors for us to promote our city to other people. But also, it's going to add from an economic perspective in that if larger events come to the city, it will certainly benefit our city from an economic perspective. More activity at restaurants, hotels will be fuller. The list goes on. Anyways, I'll, I'll stand down for a moment, your worship, and listen to any other debate. My colleagues, of course, are very supportive of this motion and contributed significantly to the drafting of this notice of motion. Alderman Collier Cart, in particular, thank you for your hard work on this issue. So if there's any other debate, either of us, I'm sure, could address those issues.
On the motion, Alderman Collier Cart.
Oh, I was going to wait a little bit till everyone else spoke, but I'll speak now. I want to welcome our esteemed guests from the Calgary Stampede. And just to cover a few things. So in the motion, council, you'll see that we would like to start this in May. We recognize in, in the numbers where there may be a revenue shortfall, these aren't hard numbers. That's, that's what Mr. Wong thinks they might be or could be. So what we'd like to do is come back in a year and evaluate the impact positively and negatively that this has had, because I'll tell you, I'm all signed up to add the zoo onto this. And we, all of us, I think, got the email today. And in my view, anything that supports tourism in this city, we should make every effort to accommodate. And, yes, yeah, so if there is an amendment, we'd be happy to do that. So let me just identify a few things, members of council. In the letter that you've just received, if you look at Randy Williams' letter from Tourism Calgary, the first paragraph he talks about are the two key benefits. Calgary Tourism, as you know, has gone through a major reorganization, and they are moving on their pathway to becoming an aggressive destination marketing organization. And, and, and they believe that this would assist in both attracting and servicing meetings and convention business in Calgary. And primarily, you know, our, our thought behind this is that we really need to connect the facilities of the Calgary Convention Centre and the BMO Centre now that it's really operational and an excellent facility. It's a seamless entity when we're trying to apply for these worldwide events and activities. And also, the individual and small group travelers to Calgary will have better access from downtown hotels. And one of the things they pointed out in this that I thought was really valuable to underline was that Tourism Calgary has at least 500 members. And those include restaurants, stores, attractions, and so on. And it just, in our view, Alderman Jones and Chabot and I believe that it just adds to the vibrancy of the downtown with our tourists and, and attracting these major, major conventions. Because if you turn the page over and look at Calgary Economic Development, you know, their letter, you know, although they do have some reservation about endorsing this whole heartedly and unequivocally because there may be a revenue shortfall, they're the first to admit that we're really short on convention space. And, and we need certainly larger convention facilities, and that is being worked on. I'm sure Alderman Pootmans and others will attest to that. So when you, when you add in the, as a frequent user of the Stampede grounds for trade shows and other major events, Calgary Economic Development found that the current fare situation is most inconvenient to our clients and guests, especially those of out of town. And in the second paragraph, you'll see there that depending on how aggressive the event organizers are, some of them do get the, the transit fare waived. And it's part of the whole event package, right? But it's not sort of across the board. Is it, am I running over, your worship? Okay, well, thank you, your worship, for supporting this notice of motion.
Alderman Keating?
Thank you, worship. I did have some questions about this, and I really support and I understand the free fare on transit during a convention or a major trade show and those sorts of things. Extending it in this one direction, unfortunately. I'm, I'm just wondering of the implications of the residents within that area get a free zone and nobody else does. What about delegates who happen to stay in hotels in other areas throughout the city who would not be able to capitalize on this? I would much sooner see a, I guess, a motion or something along this lines that says we give free passes to anyone who attends a major event in Calgary across the city, and then they can stay where they, where they like. An example is, I happen to go to the Greg Cup on behalf of the city, and your ticket gave you free fare on transit, and that was automatic. So I would sooner see something like that. Thank you.
Alderman Farrell on the motion?
Thank you. I have a number of questions. I mean, it's an intriguing idea. I think there may be other options than just providing a free fare zone. What I can see is commuters coming and parking on residential streets, taking advantage of the free fare. So that is of a big concern. I think we may end up opening up something that we don't anticipate. So that's the first question. I've got several. Mr. Logan?
Worship, I would say that one of our concerns with that, as well as it could be an unintended consequence, that, as you know, the, the park, Stampede Park, has a considerable amount of parking. And this would basically open up a huge park and ride lot at the edge of downtown.
So, okay, that would be, I mean, I know people have suggested that we, we do the same with the Sunnyside Station. The residents of Sunnyside would be appalled by that because we would end up having a major traffic problem. But is there a way, I've been to some conferences where if you attend a conference, you get a pass. And the pass, in New York, they've got a very elegant system that can kind of take you anywhere. You can use it as many times as you want during the day. And it, it runs out after a certain amount of time. Is there something, I think we need to do more, but is there something else we could do? I'm thinking of the U-Pass that we have, that kind of thing.
Your worship, I think that, you know, I support what, what the, a couple of the Aldermen are saying about making this a more attractive destination for conventions by combining our resources. And I think that there's a way to accomplish that goal in a different manner. I went online and I looked at sort of what are the events that are on right now? How do you sign up for, how do you start to get your event there? Is there a way that a delegate could, a delegate could select that transit option for even a day before and after, so maybe they do go to the zoo or they do go to another part of the city to do something else while they're here? We have worked with conventions in the past. We have worked with sporting events in the past so that the ticket does basically give them a fare for the day. We've done it at a modest fee, you know, and I don't think we have to apologize for the fact that we provide a high-quality, safe, reliable system. And there's a value to that. I mean, people don't go to the events for free. Why, you know, I'm at a bit of a loss to understand why we would provide this service at no cost.
So...
I'm in the debate, sorry. That wasn't the question.
What was the question?
You asked me.
Question was?
Oh, yeah. What are the alternatives? So you're, you're, I know everyone's tired, and you should be. I imagine you're particularly tired because we were on our feet for how many hours yesterday answering all, all sorts of questions, but there's an, there seems to be an appetite to look at a more creative way to improve tourists' access to different parts of our city, certainly linking different facilities. And I'm not certain if this is the method we should do. It seems like it could open up to commuters as well. So how can we target it, and what would you need in order to look at it more closely?
Your worship, I would suggest that there's ways that we could work with both the Stampede Group and the, the Convention Centre and other, other people, such as the Calgary Stampeters, and find ways to combine their events with, with the transit fare to attract people to use our system in, in combination with their event.
Going north. You're such a, okay.
Why limit it to these two?
Yes. And then what about the Few Flames Games that I've gone to? The, the transit provides like constant service to, to get people out of Stampede Park. And imagine there's a significant cost to that, but people are all willingly paying for it. More people take the transit than drive there. So how would that impact? The, the revenue would be significant.
That's a good question. We, we had thought about this, that if the free fare zone was extended, you'll, we will impeak that peak, we will increase the peak load before and after the events by having more people use it to and from the downtown. So we would have to plan for that in our, in our service delivery.
And we haven't really anticipated how to cover the costs of this, because this would be an ongoing cost that would be embedded into our budget. I'm not opposed to it. I think we should be bolstering transit whenever we can. So I, I'm not opposed to the idea, but I think it has a lot of merit. I, I don't know if we've been, I think there may be some other creative options. So, council, I, I think I'd like to refer it. I don't want it to hamper debate. So we can still debate a referral.
Yeah, you can debate a referral. Could I, if you're thinking of referring it, are you considering referring it to administration for a review of other options and report back?
Well, review of this, the possible unforeseen impacts and other options with the goal to, what's this? No, 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 I'm, I'm musing. I'm, I'm, we're all tired. The, the, I, I think that's what I'd like to attempt to do. And I'm, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to stymie it. I think it needs some more exploration.
Do we have a referral?
A referral. Date?
So it's a referral to administration to examine alternatives to return to LPT not later than, Mr. Logan?
Mr. Logan, and, and the movers?
Your worship, just glancing at the calendar, and I believe I heard the LPT referral would be the route through.
Well, and you would need to work with those groups to see what their needs are.
Yeah, sure, worship. We're, we've missed the, the February date. The next available one would be March, where we could, you know, potentially meet with, we meet with those groups to, to talk about how, how that would work. I mean, to try to make it more seamless. I would ask maybe for a bit more time. We have a number of irons in the fire right now. If, if council would indulge the April 20th LPT?
And then still gets the, there's still, might be something in place by this?
That would, that would still give us the opportunity to put it in place prior to the summer. And I noticed that the date was May 2011. That would still be prior to May 2011. And there would be a council meeting on May 9th of 2011.
And would you include the movers of the motion as well?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, thanks. And I'm seeing something like the...
Do I have a second, or?
And, and...
Demong actually seconded.
And what I see is a negotiation similar to the way we negotiated the U-Pass and the ACAD. A CAD pass. Okay, thanks. I'll sit down.
On the referral, Alderman MacLeod? On the referral, Alderman McLeod.
Thank you. Apparently what I had to say was not unique in thought, so I, I would support the referral and, um, I, I think there are alternative mechanisms, um, some of which I've used when I've attended conferences in other cities. And I, are the mics on over there? I, or is the noise just carrying? I'm not sure. It's kind of throwing me, sorry. Um, anyway, I support the referral and I'll just leave it at that.
Alderman Karah.
I'm reiterating what Alderman McLeod said. Uh, you know, I think that there's a lot of different ways that this can go and I think it needs to go. I think we need to support tourism Calgary. I was willing, I think, to just say, yeah, let's try it for a year here and just throw down and say that. The thing that freaked me out was the idea of, um, Stampede Ground becoming a mega parking, park and ride, which would potentially have to be controlled, but there's nothing in here that...
They have said they control.
Um, I, I do think that there's multiple ways we can go. And if we can sort of commit to a collaborative, problem-solving approach between the Stampede and the, uh, and administration and council to sort of figure out how to just maximize our tourism bang for a buck and, and the, while, while also making sure we sort of hold on to a modicum of user pays. I mean, I've been to tons and tons of con, of conferences where there's a pass included with that, with your conference entry. And I, I'd like to see the pros and cons and I'd like to, uh, but I am supportive of this, but I think a referral, if it doesn't delay us being able to deploy in May, I will support.
Thank you, worship. Can we see the referral on the, okay.
You can't see it, sir. Let's not play.
Thank you. Um, I can't, uh, it's not, I can't ref, uh, amend a referral, right? So how, only as time, because I, I think that the zoo should be included in this and I don't know how we could accomplish that, right? So would we have to have a, uh, like a motion arising to ask them to include the, or is that a friendly amendment that could be?
It's a wild idea.
Anyway, I, we, we're putting the Science Center there too. We should be including that, uh, that stop. And so, uh, is it possible for me to do a motion arising, asking, uh, to add that into this consideration? I'll accept that as a motion. Okay, thank you. On the, uh, referral, Alderman Putman.
Yes, thank you, worship. Um, actually, maybe, um, a couple of comments and then, or maybe I should start with this. I just opened a message from the mayor and he mentioned a few things. Sir, uh, second, uh, first was a matter, um, personnel matter. Second, we've all got this on our machines. Second, I meant to send you all a note on the free fare zone notice of motion. You've all read it, so we're, we're, that's, that's why you're doing this now. Well, then Drew, you're very prescient because that's precisely what the mayor was asking for, referring, uh, referring, well, let me read it if people haven't. I'm thinking that we need a broader, uh, review of transit and its life, sorry, and its long-term plans and that this question would fit, sorry. So I meant to send you all a note on the free fare zone notice of motion. I am thinking that we need a broader review of transit and its long-term plans and that this question would fit into that. I am in favor tabling the discussion or referring it to administration to come back to LPT. So there you go. We're there. Um, I would support this motion. I think that a broader review, perhaps we can amend it to express that. I would also ask that as part of the flavor of that review is already in discussions with, um, the Calgary Convention Center, which is, on whose board I serve, um, some sense that there are a number of organizations in town that are interested in, in taking advantage of a high-quality service. But as I think you mentioned in passing, General Manager Logan, there is a, a cost. This is a service that's provided and, and for every valuable service that this city provides, I think we need to take a, a, an approach, a very broad approach, a non-siloed approach that was, I think is, is going to be a serious policy, um, effort to determine how that might look for all the various, um, corporate partners in town and, and other, um, not-for-profit. I mean, I think there are seven or eight of them. I mean, there, there are a number of agencies in town that I think should be part of this discussion as well. So this, this could become a rather large undertaking. Thank you, worship.
Counsel, recess to 3:45.
Thank you, worship. Um, well, I'm going to address a couple of issues here that I probably won't get a chance to address in my close if this referral passes. And these are some of the issues that have been brought up by some of the members of council through their debate. Um, it talked about One Direction between BMO and, or downtown and, and, uh, or between downtown and the BMO Center. And our intent here is to do this as a pilot project. You'll note in the second recommendation or the third recommendation and now therefore be it resolved that the intent is to have this report brought back to SPC on LPT in June of 2012. So essentially what we're looking for is a one-year pilot project to assess the value of introducing this free fare zone. And the findings of that could then be utilized to determine whether or not we could expand on that free fare zone. Um, there was talk about a U-Pass and how other cities have used the U-Pass for their conventions and their conferences and such. And a U-Pass implies that you'd be able to utilize your, your pass to, to use the transit system throughout the city. And I think the cost implications of that would be significantly greater than what is proposed through this notice of motion. Of course, the main intent for us is to, uh, provide a positive experience, increase the potential from an economic perspective for the hotels, restaurants and tourism. And, and by introducing or providing an opportunity for larger events to, uh, to see Calgary as, uh, as a potential venue because of the ex, um, um, increased capacity that the BMO Center provides to the TELUS Convention Center. It, uh, it would, in essence, create a whole bunch of ambassadors for our city to promote our city elsewhere. So if we have 2,000 delegates coming here, uh, every, every couple of months, that's creating a pretty large body of individuals that are helping to promote the Calgary experience by having been here and, and by having a positive experience, a seamless transition between the two venues, I think would go a long ways to promoting the whole welcoming attitude of Calgary. Parking was brought up as potentially, uh, having the, the Stampede Grounds becoming a parking zone, um, for people to utilize the transit system for free and thereby increasing additional costs to the system. Uh, we all know where our park and ride areas lie right now in regards to utilization rate and that's $3 per day. Um, the, uh, the Stampede Grounds is currently gated and to park in the Stampede Grounds, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's about $12 to park in the Stampede Grounds. So to suggest that it's going to create a big, large parking zone for people to use the transit system, in my opinion, is not something that's supported by our current park and ride, um, facilities that we currently have. So in short, your worship, I'm not going to support the, um, the referral motion and hope council won't support it either. Um, and hopefully we can look at doing this as a pilot project and take the findings from it to look at expanding elsewhere. Close. Thank you.
Alderman Colley-Ehrhart on the referral.
Uh, thank you, uh, your worship. Can you amend a referral?
No. Only as time.
Uh, well, first of all, counsel, let's just give this a try today. Uh, let's pilot this for a year and see how it goes. It seems, uh, the intention of our motion today is, is to try this for a year and to just expand the free fare zone, move slowly, be considered and intentional in how we do this, and then evaluate the, the, uh, the, the, the whole process. Uh, I hear a lot of other great ideas today, um, but that wasn't the intention of our motion today. If, if someone wants to bring a motion forward that's going to address this whole strategy be, strategy beyond what we've asked for, no problem. But it wasn't our intention to, to, uh, to get into all of this without going through a period of just trying this out and evaluating and weighing the impact. So I'm hoping that, uh, that you won't support the referral and, uh, that, um, that, uh, we can try this out and, uh, and see how it works, uh, to support tourism in Calgary. Thank you.
Alderman Stevenson on the referral. So this, my, my motion then to add the other will have to be done after this? Yeah, you cannot amend a referral. Okay, so if the referral is accepted, then I'll add this. I'm actually going to vote against the referral, but if it is accepted, then I will add this other to it. Thank you. Alderman Jones on the referral.
Yes, your worship. Uh, I'm not in favor of the referral, but, uh, in discussion in the break with Mr. Beck and Mr. Fraser, I want to assure council that they've indicated that, uh, Stampede Park won't be used as a park and ride as far as they're concerned because they need it for their own clients. They don't, they don't plan on doing that, so, and I'm sure the board would concur with that. So any fears that the, uh, council has about it being a park and ride has just been a legacy of the fact that they've said it won't be and it won't turn into one.
So your worship, just on a point of procedure, if this gets, if this gets referred, then we can't do a motion arising or anything, right? Because there's nothing before us.
Madam Clerk? I'm sorry?
Your worship, we have in the past.
We have in the past, yeah.
Just, it's almost like a motion to add a further request for the administration.
To look at.
To look at that in conjunction with, because the motion is a debt, it's only referred.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you.
On the referral, Alderman Hodges.
Uh, your worship, uh, this is, uh, members of council, this is an annual motion. It comes up at least once a year and I can remember it, uh, four or five times. There's usually been a resolution with Tourism Group, Convention Center, Stampede Board as to how to accommodate special events. I think that's probably what the administration would like a chance to have a look at and to work on. And whether it's, uh, passes that, uh, are distributed to, uh, people from outside of Calgary attending conventions or whatever, uh, it might, the solution might be, I think that's the information we need. I don't have the previous, uh, notices of motion here, but, uh, I know it's an annual event and therefore there's a, uh, fair amount of information about it from past notices of motion, so I will support the referral.
On Alderman Farrell to close on the referral.
Thank you. I, I hope this isn't seen as a way to kill this. I'm not intending that at all. I just would like to look at some other options with the goal of achieving something similar. Um, and I would think that if, uh, Alderman Jones was looking at the zoo, um, I'd already asked Mr. Logan whether or not members of council who brought the motion forward would be involved in this roundtable and he had suggested yes, of course. So I think that's implicit. Um, but I, I think he's just looking at transit in a different way. Thank you.
On the referral, are we agreed? Are there any opposed? Call the rule, call a rule, please.
Alderman Chabot.
No.
Alderman Colley-Ehrhart?
No.
Alderman Demong?
No.
Alderman Farrell?
Yes.
Alderman Hodges?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
No.
Alderman Keating?
No.
Alderman McLeod?
Yes.
Alderman Mar?
No.
Alderman Putmans?
Yes.
Alderman Stevenson?
No.
Alderman Karah?
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Loeb?
Yes.
On the main motion, Alderman Colley-Ehrhart.
No, your worship, I was ready to do a motion arising on the referral, but I'm thrilled with the outcome, so I'll defer to my honorable, dishonorable colleague to close.
On the main motion, Alderman Farrell.
Thank you. I, I'm sorry, I don't have it anymore, so I don't know what I've done with it. Alderman Hodges? Oh, thank you. Um, I'm not sure how we can absorb 1.5 to 2 million into the transits operating in budget without impacting the budget. So I think we need to hear back on what the impacts are to the budget. It means the budget goes up or we cut and we decided the budget not to cut. So how would you interpret this, Mr. Logan?
Mr. Logan or Mr. Tolbert?
Your worship, um, given the timing that's, that's proposed in the motion of May, uh, if we were to extend the free fare zone at the beginning of May, let's say, then we would, uh, look to the, the revenue that we were seeing coming into the system at the end of May, June, July. So I would suspect by the time we came back to council in September, we would have a fairly good idea of, of what our, uh, revenue change had been. We can, and, and we can isolate it by area.
And you can absorb this?
I don't, I don't have, uh, January's numbers. Uh, I, you know, where we were coming out of last year, we were tracking right on budget, so we're not running a big surplus. Um, it reduces our flexibility, just like any other budget discussion that we've had recently. I don't, as you know, I, I don't think we're really keen to absorb this. I think we'd like to keep our revenue up so that we can continue to provide the service and, and have some flexibility to do some of the things that we get asked to do.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Tolbert, do you want to have anything to add?
Yes, um, just to reiterate what, uh, GM Logan said, I mean, it's amazing how many times members of council emphasize how important transit is and expanding service and BRT, but yet we want to cut the revenue, which really means you're cutting service.
Thank you. So I think I need to make an amendment, um, which would be to report back to council on the, on the, um, on the impacts on transit, both budget and service.
Service.
Or service and revenues. No, prior, I think we need to see, well, I, I think within the next few weeks, if possible.
So how would you, how would you phrase that, Alderman? I guess, I think it sounds to me like another referral, referral to administration for a re, for a report from transit.
Well, referral lost.
No, but you can do another one. Refer to administration.
I don't think it's going to win.
There's always another vote, Alderman Farrell. To quote Alderman Hodges.
I think we need some more information on what the impacts to, and I don't want to do a referral. Is there another, and I have, pardon? I think transit should be able to determine, they should be able to forecast the impacts of this, I would think.
We have, your worship.
You have?
Yeah, I mean, the, we've looked at, there's a number of major drivers. We know, we've looked at the revenues coming and going from the station. We've looked at the special events at, on the Stampede Grounds particularly that drive significant revenue bumps, uh, primarily the Stampede itself, which is about $900,000 worth of revenue.
Okay, so we, we debated for, for quite some time on 500,000 with our transit budget during budget time, I believe. Um, so would the movers be willing to wait a week so I could, we could get the information in the next meeting? in the next meeting? No?
Alderman Farrell, you know, we've got a lot of stuff to get through here.
All right, I'm just gonna.
Place a referral to administration.
It's not going to, it won't pass. I don't want to waste council's time. I would say and report on the, well, it says evaluate the results. I'm sitting down. Thanks.
On the main motion, Alderman McLeod.
Thank you. I'm not going to support this. Transit is a priority, and the revenue loss needs to be absorbed by those groups who are asking for this. If the Stampede and the other groups that are asking for this are willing to absorb the revenue loss, then I'm okay with that. I think there's other ways of doing this. I think it can be done in partnership. Conference passes are different than new passes. I don't see that as a problem. You can restrict the zones or however you want to do it. I'm completely in support of the concept. I am not in support of a flat opening up, extending of the free fair zone.
On the main motion, Alderman Colley-Ehrhart.
Thank you, your worship. Well, I think that when we got rid of the $3 parking fee, it was about $6 million or $4 million, and it was supposedly, I think it was absorbed into this. We're looking at probably a half a year to do this, and by the time you get this rolling June 1st, and you've got six months, I think that we can absorb this and just try it, council, and we would appreciate your support. Thank you.
Alderman Karah on the main motion.
I just want to say that as much as I have respect for our friends at the Stampede and, you know, feel that this is a really, really important institution to the city of Calgary, an assurance that they're not going to use this as a park and ride, we need something more toothsome than that. We need something that we can hang our hat on a little bit more than that, and so, could I make, you know, a motion arising to address that? Would that be the way to do? Or could it be an amendment to, yeah, I think an amendment would be the way to go. Can we just say, as a, yeah, as a D, now therefore be it resolved? Can we actually make it C and push C to, yeah, D is fine, and just say that this is subject to the Stampede putting in place, measures acceptable with regard to preventing the Stampede grounds on off-peak times from functioning as a park and ride zone? I can ask Mr. Logan for his.
Mr. Tolbert, I think, I want to speak to this.
Your worship, enforcement of this is almost impossible. So, my suggestion is, is rather than try to think of a mechanism, if there's a great degree of trust between the city and the Stampede, could we not take something in writing from the Stampede which says they undertake to not operate their parking on their grounds as a park and ride site?
I think that's important, because, I mean, the purpose of this is not to create a revenue cash cow for the Stampede on the backs of Calgary Transit. The purpose of this is to promote tourism and convention.
Request the mayor to write a letter?
No, 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 request that the President of the Stampede Board write a letter to the mayor and city council clearly stating the Stampede's commitment to treat the extension of the, or to prevent park and ride activities from occurring at the Stampede Board, at the Stampede grounds.
I think that's a motion arising, Alderman.
Is it? Why, I'm happy to be, I'm happy for it to be a motion arising, I just want to hear, I'm just curious technically and why that's the case, if the clerk would be so kind as to educate me.
Delighted, your worship. If you look at the thrust of the motion and the main points of it, it is to go through and directing the administration to absorb directing the free fair. Requesting something from the Stampede Board would be a motion arising once this passed. It's irrelevant until that passes.
Capita. Thank you.
Alderman Keating on the main motion.
Yes, thank you, your worship. Have I spoken to this already?
Not on the main motion.
I don't know, I lost there. I come back to, I guess, with a statement I made earlier, I'm very in favor of the idea of making the easy transition between downtown convention and the Stampede convention and making that, but I believe that this is specific to delegates at a tourism venue, not across, and we do have a large amount of residential in this area who will end up benefiting from this, where they will not benefit from any other place in the city, and that causes me a problem. That goes back to my original motion, our original mention, that if we're going to do this, I think we should offer it free to the delegates in this area so that they can go back and forth without question. But opening it up across the zone does give me difficulty, because then again, where do we stop? We go to the zoo? There's a number of people who can drive to the zoo and park and come into downtown for free. You know, then we have the McMahon Stadium and on and on of these. So, I think if we're doing something specific for delegates at conventions, and we want to make it nice and free, we do that, but we just don't open it across the base. Thank you.
Alderman Demong on the main motion.
I'm not sure exactly who I'm addressing this to, possibly the city manager. Have we had any discussions with the city tourism and/or economic development?
A letter?
From, I'm sorry, not Calgary Tourism, Chamber of Commerce, as to what kind of numbers we would be looking at as revenue for the city in increased tourism? Well, yeah, it's not really the tourism that you're looking for, it's the business tourism more to the point, isn't it?
Is there a question there?
My question more is to the actual business side of this, as to whether there would be an increased amount of conventions actually being held at this. Has there been any documentation on this whatsoever?
Mr. Tolbert?
Your worship, I'm not aware of any, and I would argue that it's up to those proponents for this to present that.
And do you have any recommendations as to how I would try and get those kind of numbers from the proponents?
I don't know, a referral motion might work.
Well, as much as I'm all in favor of trying to get more tourism, more business, I'm a delegate to many conventions myself, usually they are held up in Edmonton because they do have facilities that can hold these kind of conventions without moving them around the city. I am going to have to ask for a referral, very similar to the one that we just saw. I'm sorry, I've reconsidered my vote in the last few minutes thinking about it. I would like to see some numbers with regards to how this impacts transit, and if we can get some information from both Chamber Commerce and/or Economic Development as far as new.
So, Alderman Demong, if, because it's got to be different than the last one, I could suggest some language for you. Did you get intercepted along the way or something?
Pardon me?
Is there hijacking occurred along the way?
Well, no, I've, when I first voted on against the referral, I thought this was a fantastic idea in that this is going to increase business, increase tourism on a regular basis, and in retrospect, I'm thinking I would like to see what kind of numbers this would indicate.
So, may I help you with some language?
Yes, I would love that assistance.
Refer the matter to administration for consultation with Calgary Tourism and Calgary Economic Development.
And any other.
And Calgary Transit.
And any other stakeholders that may will be.
Any other stakeholders for an evaluation of economic impact on the city.
And the movers of this motion.
Economic impact on the city and impact on transit's annual operating budget and service levels, because I think those all play into it.
Well, you're a far better mind reader than the city clerk, your worship.
It depends whether she was quick enough to get it out. To report back to council? Mr. Tolbert, when do you think this consultation could be completed?
Your worship, there is one other report coming that this would relate to. We have our fair strategy report coming to LPT in May.
Could, can we attach it to that?
That didn't occur to me when I spoke earlier, but that, you know, this is all about what are we going to charge for our service?
So, to be included as an appendix to the fair strategy report to be received in May?
Or concurrent with it.
Or to be received concurrent with? Either or?
Um.
Alderman Demong, how's that?
I am, I was actually going to hope to refer it back to an April meeting if that was at all feasible. I can't remember what your comment was to that earlier.
My previous, sorry, your worship.
Go ahead.
My previous comment was the April 20th LPT and May 9th council. This is just additional information on something we already had scheduled.
Is it feasible to pull that back and bring it in concurrence, concurrently?
I'd prefer not to pull the fair strategy back. That one's fairly involved, and we have a number of other reports queued up with the same staff.
Well, I can see this being a separate issue in of itself. I would like to put said referral motion onto the floor.
Just wait a moment till we get it. Do I have a second or?
Yes, please.
Oh, Alderman Putman, thank you.
It's coming, you have to wait.
Please, be seated.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll just wait till the language gets up, Alderman Putman. Yeah, I know he's prepared to speak. Let's make sure that we have it.
Yes, your worship, I would heartily endorse this. It also occurs to me, if I may, ask a question of the proponents, it occurs, on reading and on reflection on listening to a lot of the comments today, the first two where else is speak to our competitiveness and our ability to attract conventions. I sit on the convention bureau, and I'm wondering if, I haven't had a chance really to discuss this motion in any great detail with management or the board at the Convention Center, but it occurs to me that the vast majority of business and perhaps the Stampede officials, I don't know if there's a mechanism to hear from them, perhaps not, has already been booked. Typically, these events are well out, and there might be one or two small shows, but any significant business right now, I'm guessing the majority of it is probably already in place, and to offer this incentive at this late date, well, if you care to respond, that would be great. Thank you.
Point of order? Somebody didn't quite read my mind properly. Economic benefits to the city and impact on transit.
Ah, okay.
And I'll try and open my mind a little farther next time. To the city.
Thank you very much. Discussion on the referral, debating of the referral. Alderman Chabot.
Thank you, worship. A couple of issues that have been brought up. There's, one of them, questions from Alderman Demong had to do with lost revenue and the impact, and that was also raised by Alderman McLeod as being an issue in regards to how are we going to absorb this lost revenue? How is this going to impact the public transportation system? And if I may just bring you back just a couple of years, in that, in 2009, city council approved an increase to the operating budget of 150,000 man-hours, and I think I brought this up during budget debate in 2009. So, in 2000, or pardon me, in 2008, we approved an increase of 150,000 man-hours to public transportation. Transit ridership did not go up in 2009. So, how was that lost revenue absorbed into transit? I never heard the answer to that yet. In 2010, the same situation occurred over again. We had that 150, that, well, no, actually, we pulled back some of those man-hours in 2010, I think to the tune of about 60,000, but ridership still didn't go up commensurate to 2008. And again, the projected revenue associated with that increase in man-hours wasn't realized. So, I'm not sure how transit absorbed that. Maybe somehow in conjunction with the transportation budget, but it somehow disappeared, and I don't know how it impacted our system, whether it decreased our level of service, and I'm sure it probably did in some way or some fashion, although I don't know how transportation did it, but I do put a lot of confidence in our managers to be able to manage within the budget allocations that we've given them. This is a direction that we're trying to give council in moving forward on a new opportunity and making it seamless. World Skills is an example, was one of the few organizations that was able to negotiate an agreement at no cost to them. Most of the organizations, when they want to have a free travel between the two venues, usually end up paying for it, and so they have to go through a negotiations process with the transit folks to come to an agreement on what the actual cost is of that. So, I'm not disputing that there may be a cost associated with it. I'm just saying that this, our intent here is to look at this as a pilot project, so as far as this referral is concerned, looking at the economic impacts and benefits, whilst I think it may be a worthy thing to do as a motion arising, I don't think it would necessarily provide additional benefit to looking at a pilot project between these two venues. There was another issue that was raised. Oh, yes, thank you for that, bookings. We received a report recently, and I think it was at Community and Protective Services where the TELUS Convention Center presented to us in regards to their bookings and to the future. Yeah, it might have been an audit. So, they did show that for 2011, that the majority of the site was booked in fact, but not all, but in 2012, the bookings were, it was almost none, and 2013 showed zero. I could not believe it, zero. So, of course, I agree with Alderman Putman's that these things are booked well in advance, but to show zero for 2013 to me, considering that these events typically require two to three years' worth of planning, especially the large ones, that they should have at least been entered in, have entered into discussions with TELUS. This is looking at creating increased opportunity for these larger events, to start these negotiations with our city, with the TELUS Convention Center, and I don't think this is a bad idea. I just don't think it's a good idea to do here within this report, because this essentially stagnates the opportunity to move forward with this opportunity. To report back as a motion arising, I think would be more applicable for this particular motion, which would then at least provide a report back to us, so we could clearly delineate exactly what the implications are of doing this and the potential benefits. So, I'm not going to support this, but it's. So I'm not going to support this, but it's a good idea.
Alderman Cloud on the referral.
Thank you. On the, I don't think it's appropriate at this juncture to go back to the debate that we had around the budget. With respect to the relationship between the transit hours and ridership and what the lag time is on that, I do think that, and I want to emphasize, I'm fully supportive of the concept. I am not supportive of transit absorbing the loss. That's my problem with this. I will support a referral because I think there's other ways around it and that we can manage this and come forward with the answer that the proponents of this motion are looking for. But I don't think in its current form I can support it. So I would prefer the referral. Failing the referral, I will vote against the motion itself.
Alderman Hodges on the referral.
Just briefly, I supported your earlier referral and I think this motion is worded more accurately. So I'll be supporting it as well.
Thank you. Alderman Demong to close on the referral.
I understand the concern of the lost revenue in previous years in transit and I'm not sure if adding more lost revenue is going to solve that problem. If we are booking two to three years in advance on these conferences, I'm not sure how a three-month delay is going to make a great deal of difference in the long run. Furthermore, I'm not seeing how this is actually going to delay the notice of motion, assuming that this that this report comes back and we proceed with the idea. Close.
Thank you. On the referral, are we agreed? Opposed? Color roll, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Demong.
Yes.
Alderman Farrell. Alderman Hodges.
Yes.
Alderman Jones.
No.
Alderman Keating.
No.
Alderman McLeod.
Yes.
Alderman Maher. Alderman Putmans. Alderman Stevenson.
No.
Alderman Karah.
Yes.
Alderman Chabot. Alderman Collier Card.
No.
Are you to vote?
Oh, sorry, Deputy Mayor Lowe.
Yes.
I almost forgot you. Carried, your worship.
The Alderman Hodges, are you going to move? Would you want to? Sorry? No, turn it on, will you please? There we are.
Now it seems to be okay. Oh, your worship, though, move, we have a number of in-camera items.
No, the, I prefer to do the urgent business ahead of time.
Urgent business we filed, this was yesterday, Monday, February 7th at 9:30. Well, just a second, if he doesn't, he doesn't. Madam Clerk usually adds some extras.
Your worship, I don't have copies. I was looking through my material and I noticed there's a whole bunch of in-camera things. And somehow, either I must have misplaced them or something, but if possible, if I could have copies of that. No, I don't, I look through my stuff, I don't have that.
So there's the notice of motion, there's also the blue sheet, the chief financial officer's report. Does anybody not have both of those documents? Does anyone not have both of those? Do you have the blue and the blue sheet, Alderman Chabot? That blue sheet and the notice of motion. Oh, I'm sorry, the blue sheet is, no, it's not in camera. No, it's not in camera, no.
Right one or left one?
Worship, are we prepared?
Does everybody have both pieces of material?
I have, I have.
Alderman Hodges.
Yeah, yes, yesterday morning at 9:00 AM, or sorry, at 9:30, this, our matter of urgent business was was put on the agenda. It reads fairly straightforwardly. We have a couple of situations, this isn't a massive.
If I could ask for a second or? Second by Alderman Jones. Alderman Chabot, either. Okay, thank you. Off we go.
I'll try it again, your worship.
Thank you.
Speaking from experience on this issue of pathways versus sidewalks, this has occurred in my area where a new regional path was built. The original sidewalk was removed. The concrete sidewalk in a three-meter-wide asphalt path was put in adjacent to several, a number of residential properties on the south side of 32nd Avenue Northwest, immediately south of where Markham Mall is located. Yes, the pathway is on public land and in fact, in part, it goes through a park area. But the adjacent homeowners are now being nabbed with the responsibility to remove the snow and ice, which isn't a small issue with respect to a three-meter-wide asphalt path. So we have a four-part motion here, therefore be it resolved that the street's bylaw be amended to exempt property owners from clearing designated pathways, meaning asphalt pathways to their full width where such pathways are adjacent to their property, and that warnings, orders, and enforcement efforts in these circumstances be stayed and that residents of effect be informed of their responsibility with respect to maintenance of designated pathways adjacent to their properties before the, in the meantime here, before the bylaws amended, of course. And four, that the bylaw amendment definitions of responsibility and proposed citizen education plan be brought to the standing policy committee and community and protective services not later than 2011 September. So this isn't a huge issue, but it is nevertheless an issue for property owners who are totally unaware that they're now going to be responsible for a asphalt pathway.
On the, on the motion, Alderman Jones.
Your worship, I just have one question for Alderman Hodges and it's in the first part of the now therefore resolved. It says clearing designated pathways to their full width. What width do you propose that they clear them to?
Get my microphone tuned up here. The compromise that Mr. Bruce and company have come up with is three feet. In other words, the old concrete pathway was about three or three and a half feet wide. This is in one of the older districts, it's not in a new area of the city where the sidewalks need to be wide.
Just wondering if that shouldn't be in your motion then?
Remined it.
I can't, I seconded it. I just think it should be in there so that there is a designated width that you got to do it or.
I actually, I actually left it out, Alderman Jones, so that that could be determined. I mean, I'm sure there's some language in.
Then it should say, then it should say to be determined by the bylaw officer.
Not by the bylaw officer.
It's got to be determined by somebody.
However you want to do it.
I can't, I seconded the motion.
Well, we could do an amendment then, got it to one meter.
Well, it would be in number three, but if you'd like to put an amendment, then there are plenty of lights on, so we'll sit down.
On the motion, Alderman Stevenson.
Thank you, your worship. I have a couple of questions for GM Logan, right? Sorry.
Yes, sir.
Is it Erica or is it?
Mr. Logan, could you tell me what the city policy is as far as snow removal on pathways like this? Do we remove these, remove the snow or take care of that?
Your worship, I believe with respect to pathways, GM Hargensheimer would be the correct person.
Oh, okay.
So, your worship, the difference in the width of the pathways actually is a one to two ratio. So the sidewalk would be 1.2 meters and the pathway is 2.5 meters. And what we have here is, and Alderman Hodges is indicating that it's an isolated case, but increasingly there are pathway connectors in front of people's homes that lead to segments of the commuter pathway. And so a homeowner may find themselves with a two and a half meters width of sidewalk in front of their home rather than their conventional sidewalk.
I understand that, but what I'm wanting to know is, do we as a city clear the snow from the regional pathways?
We, we don't, well, the answer is, is yes, we do on priority routes, but not in every single case. So that's the issue in terms of whether or not this has a significant budget implication if the city were to take it over. And if the homeowner was clearing the half of the pathway, there may be an issue with ice accumulating on the other half as the water melts. And so I'm not so sure that it's a simple case of just asking the homeowners to clear half of it.
I'm just looking to make sure we're not, and we don't have a double standard here, that we're saying to the homeowner they have to clear it, but we, when we have the same pathway down the road a little bit, we don't keep it clean.
Your worship, I think you're right at the nub of the issue because these are simultaneously access sidewalks, if you want to use that word, in front of someone's home where the homeowner typically is asked to clear them. And now the suggestion is that if they only clear half of it, is that is that the appropriate solution?
Because I'm using my own neighborhood as an example, where the, these pathways go in front of a city park, then they're not necessarily cleaned by the city and yet the neighbors on each side would have to clean it in front of theirs. Now is that, am I right on that or is?
Well, I would say that it's certainly true and this is where it sort of falls between Mr. Logan and I in that the city doesn't have the snow removal budget to clear every piece of city-owned sidewalk today.
Right. Yeah, that's, and that's what concerns me. I've been told that if it was cement, ordinary sidewalk, that it would be cleared. But when it's a paved pathway, it's called a pathway, then it's not. Am I being misinformed on that?
Worship, it varies. We have, it's similar to the roadways, we have priorities. And there are some portions of the pathway that are considered integral to the commuter system and they get cleared on a priority basis. There's some in recreational areas. In fact, I think council discussed this a few weeks back and sometimes they don't get done for months, literally. I don't know the specific property that's in question here, but so they do get cleared, it just varies.
I got to say that your answers are as clear as snow-covered mud, right?
Sorry.
Because I really, I really don't have an answer to the question that I'm asking. Because you're saying that it varies, both of you are saying that it varies depending on the, so I mean, that's just the way it is with our policy, I guess, right?
It's, I guess it's similar to roads. Do we clear roads? Yes. But we cleared high priority roads first, low priority roads later.
See, I'm not concerned about the priority, I'm saying do we ever get, are they even on our list to clear? That's what I'm getting at. I was under the impression that they are not cleared, period.
Worship, your worship, I would say that that's true. I think that there, but what's at issue here is this is in front of someone's home. And so they can't actually wait for us to come. And so Alderman Hodges is proposing a compromise where half of the pathway would be cleared. Is half of the pathway being cleared better than asking a homeowner to shovel two and a half meters of pathway? Yes, I would say so. But I think that we would probably be watching it carefully to make sure that we're not increasing the hazard for our citizens. So the benefit would be the citizen would not feel like they were overly burdened and there would be at least some shoveling going on on a consistent basis.
Thank you, your worship.
On the motion, Alderman Farrell.
So Dr. Hargensheimer, there's a pathway in Brentwood on Charleswood Drive that we just are experimenting with a new material, that rubberized stuff. It's quite wide and the transportation department had identified that they would not be requiring, that the guys who were doing the traffic calming on Charleswood had suggested that we wouldn't be requiring the residents to clear the entire width, that we would expect them to clear the width of a regular pathway because it would be too much to ask to clear something twice as wide. How is this different?
I think this is exactly the same.
So do you see a problem with this?
Well, the question is, in some cases, there will be some hazards created by the snow piling up beside the pathway and it may cause increased issues in terms of safety. And then who's liable in terms of, is it the homeowner who's cleared half of it or is it the city?
Okay, so Mr. Bruce, I would love to hear from him. Would he be available when this comes to committee?
Well, I have a note from Mr. Bruce here, which basically says that that they shouldn't be, that people shouldn't be asked to clear the full width if that's, because they didn't ask for the wider pathway to be put in front of their home. The question is whether or not.
It's not the questions before us today, though. That the city's going to go and finish clearing the rest, I can't imagine that happening.
Right.
We keep on cutting your budgets and asking you to do more.
Is it better for the homeowner to shovel half of it? Absolutely.
So is, we need to start talking about fines. I know on my street, good, well, I think we have a problem with snow clearing in our city. And it's obviously a hazard in some areas.
Okay, thanks.
Alderman Chabot.
Yeah, well, maybe on a similar vein to some of my colleagues in one of my communities, they've had this pathway in front of their homes for a long time. So that means if this were to pass, it'd only be required to clear one meter of that pathway, pathway if I get that right. I'm just wondering now about these, what do they call them, like catwalks in between homes that connect street to street. Those are the responsibility of the homeowner and yet I see the majority of those not being cleared. Is that something that is going to be part of this whole information system in regards to rights and responsibilities?
I was just checking with Mr. Tully and memory serves me that in some cases, not all, but in some cases, those are actually the property of homeowners association?
Oh, well, of course, I'm referring to the communities, my communities, which are older communities and they're not residence associations. Those are all community association based, but there's a lot of these catwalks that run all the way through like for like six or seven blocks because it's based on a grid system. And yet a lot of those homeowners don't even know that it's their responsibility to clear all the way to halfway down that. And so as part of this communications portion, is there, I guess, an intent to inform those individuals that they, it's their responsibility to clear those catwalks as well?
Yep.
That's excellent, thank you, your worship, for the questions.
Alderman Maher.
Well, I was going to try my hand at an amendment to try to to try to muddle through this, but I think that there is, there's obviously an issue with regards to trying to determine whose discretion this is in and how we're going to coordinate this. But I'm at a loss as to how we can do this to try to create this definition here on the fly. So is there an administrative suggestion at this time?
Well, your worship, I spoke to both Bill Bruce and to Bashir Jamal in Parks and Animal and Bylaw Services. And there was mixed opinion in terms of whether this would help the situation or not because now we're starting to have some inconsistency. But the point is that it really isn't fair for the homeowner to have to shovel twice as much sidewalk just because he happens to have a pathway in front. And if they shovel half of it and do a good job, that would be a better citizen benefit than not. And so the removal of this from the bylaw, the way Alderman Hodges is suggesting, is probably worth a shot. I mean, at this point, neither Mr. Logan or I can give you a definitive, this is going to be causing issues answer. So to be fair to the residents, the other thing is that Mr. Bruce did tell me that we have not been enforcing. we have not been enforcing any or giving any violation tickets to any citizen who's in this situation at this point.
Even if there's a citizen complaint?
As far as I'm aware, there has not been any tickets given in this situation, but maybe Alderman Hodges has further information on that.
Well, okay, I think the trouble that we have here is the Streets bylaw be amended to exempt property owners from clearing designated paths to their full width. So, what we should do is have a number in there as to how wide the expectation should be.
I could suggest something...
Which would be consistent with what the normal width of a sidewalk is, and I think that's a fair and reasonable expectation.
Alderman Maher, if I could suggest some language for you, looking at point number four?
Yes.
After the word responsibility?
Uh huh.
If you inserted the words including the width to be cleared, that would allow...
One meter.
Or to a width of one meter, you could...
Right, so typical sidewalk is one meter.
Yeah, I would say the width to be consistent with city, standard city sidewalk, and I think that's reasonable.
Yep, then that clears it up.
I believe that that was, that's the amendment, and I think that's very clear and understandable. Thank you. I'll take my seat.
Do I have a second or for that amendment? Alderman Farrell, thank you very much. On the amendment, just go through the lights, Alderman McLeod, Alderman Hodges, Alderman Keating. On the amendment, are we agreed?
We see it up.
It inserts the words in point number four, it's gone.
We don't have an electronic copy of this, so we can certainly put those words up. We don't have an electronic copy of this, so we can certainly put the words up that we just heard, but to put the whole thing on hold is considerable.
Okay, so, did you hear that, counsel? We don't have, I did not provide an electronic copy of this, so it'd take us a long time to type it all up. What we're inserting after, the point number four, that the bylaw amendment definitions of responsibility include the width to be cleared to be the representative equivalent of a city sidewalk.
Standard city sidewalk.
Standard city sidewalk. God. I don't know how many descriptors do we need in here? Are there any questions on the amendment? Are we agreed? Are there any opposed? I see none, thank you very much. On the main motion, Alderman McLeod.
Thank you. I think, my first question was the difference between pathways and sidewalks, and I think I've got the answer to that now. But the other piece I had, question I had was about, in some of my communities, there's cut-through pathways that go between the street and green spaces that are adjacent to homes. Is that the kind of thing we're talking about as well, or that's not required to be shoveled at all?
Dr. Hargensheimer?
I believe Alderman Hodges might be able to answer this in his close, but I believe what we're talking about is commuter pathways that go right in front of somebody's house instead of a sidewalk.
Okay.
So, every single one of those little pathways that connects the street to greenway, green space is not going to be shoveled because there's, we don't shovel all of the pathways. We only shovel high-priority pathways, just as Mr. Logan only does the sidewalks or the roads. So, no, this isn't the same thing.
I guess my question is more about resident responsibility because it's like going around a corner. If you live on a corner lot, you shovel your walk all the way around the corner. If it's, it's like a walkway between two homes, but I don't think, in fact, I know most of the residents don't shovel that. I would assume that's not required then.
And as Alderman Chabot pointed out, that'd be part of the education program.
Thank you.
Matter of interest, are they supposed to be?
Alderman, Dr. Hargensheimer, go ahead.
So, that the pathways shoveling budget is not sufficient to shovel all of those stretches between a roadway and a green space?
Your worship, I can address this in my close.
Alderman Hodges to close.
Your worship, the public access easements, as they're called, between properties, generally the entire length of a property encompasses hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of those in the city, in fact, probably thousands. That's not the issue. These are commuter asphalt pathways leading from the, say, northwest, northeast, the north, down to the river valley, to the main pathway system downtown. That's what this is all about. It's not about those, as I say, hundreds of public access easements that go from link street to street. And by the way, just to add to that, Alderman McLeod, whenever this comes back to committee and you're thinking about that, some public access easements have improvements, they have asphalt paths, other public access easements are just dirt and gravel pathways, they're not improved. So, I don't know how we would reasonably expect people to shovel dirt, the snow off the dirt pathways, unimproved pathways. So, counsel, I would appreciate if you would approve this, and we can sort this one out at committee, fully sorted out in the fall.
On the motion, are we agreed? Are there any opposed? I see none, thank you very much. Whoops. Alderman Collier-Cart is opposed. Okay, thank you. Counsel, that takes us to C 2011-7, the next matter of...
Mr. Chair, I'm thinking that I would like this meeting to be done. I'm not sure if anyone else agrees with me, but I am wondering...
If we can just move it on, I will have us out of here in four seconds.
Well, I think when we get tired, we end up speaking longer, and we don't want to short shrift any items. I'm wondering, Mr. Tobert, if any of the following items are, have any urgency or if they can wait a week?
Your worship, there's really nothing that can't wait a week.
There actually is one that cannot wait a week. It's personnel item.
All right.
Hmm? So, takes us to the blue-cheated item.
Worship, if I may, based on your previous comments, if I could, I'd like to move to table the entire agenda except for that one item that you've indicated is required to the next, to Monday, the next meeting of council.
On the tabling motion, which is not debatable, and counsel, we can finish this agenda within the next little while. Are we agreed? Are there any opposed? Could you, that would, call a roll, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Jones.
No.
Alderman Keating.
No.
Alderman McLeod.
No.
Alderman Maher. Alderman Pootmans. Alderman Stevenson. Alderman Karah.
Please.
Yes.
Alderman Chabot.
Yes.
Alderman Collier-Cart.
Yes.
Alderman Demong.
No.
Alderman Farrell.
Yes.
Alderman Hodges. Deputy Mayor Lowe.
No.
Lost.
Takes us to C 2011-07, Alderman Collier-Cart, I'll accept you as the mover of this. If I have a second or...
Agreed.
Alderman Jones, thank you very much, Mr. ... Thank you. Mr. Sawyer, if you'd like to introduce it.
Thank you, your worship. This report, the attachment, is here for approval. This is the same information that was provided to council members on January 26 prior to the workshop, and there wasn't the opportunity to actually have a motion to approve it, so it's brought back today as agreed. And if I could just say, the program is well underway. There's a full launch on, starting February 11th, so this Friday, including media briefing materials for council, everything, so we're, this is rolling quite quickly.
Thank you, Mr. Sawyer. On the recommendations, Alderman Hodges. On the recommendations, Alderman Pootman.
Yes, thank you, your worship.
Could we turn on your light, please?
Thank you, your worship. On this Friday, is this something council is expected to attend as well? I was just trying to check my calendar to see if we've been invited.
Your worship, it's more in the terms of the launch of the website. There'll be information provided to all members of council, that kind of thing.
So, the answer is no? Answer is no, thank you.
On the recommendations of C 2011-07, are we agreed? Are there any opposed? I'll take, opposed by Alderman Chabot. Take motion of going camera. Alderman Hodges, seconded by Alderman Jones, are we agreed?
Agreed.
Can we just go in behind?
Let's go, guys.
This one. Pick us up from that one.
Come on, click it up.
I would move that council rise and report. Committee rise and report. Thank you. And Alderman Stevenson. Oh, I'm sorry, are we agreed? Alderman Stevenson.
Thank you. With regard to the Southland Leisure Center arenas, that council approve an appropriation increase to Recreation Capital Program 507 for the Southland Leisure Center Arena pads replacement project to be funded by the life cycle maintenance and upgrade reserve as indicated in the business plan budget implications. And number two, direct that this report, except for the administration recommendations, remain confidential under section 241A and 241G and 251C two of the Freedom and Information Protection of Privacy Act until the request for proposal process is concluded.
Seconded by Alderman Maher, are we agreed? Are there any opposed? I see none. Alderman Farrell.
Thank you. End 2010-25 appointment to Public Library Board that council table report end 2010-25 to the April regular meeting of council, and that the report resume, oh, I'm sorry, report resumes and discussion remain confidential under section 17, 1, and 19 of FOIP.
Seconded by Alderman McLeod, are we agreed? Are there any objections? I see none, thank you very much. Alderman Hodges.
No personnel items to report.
I'm sorry. No personnel items to report. Oh, no personnel items to report, thank you. Move the wave, the reading. No, 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 I do have one. I thought we had one more.
Diane.
Oh, yes. Yeah, okay. Alderman Collier-Cart.
Thank you, worship. On behalf of Mayor Nenshi and members of council, Mr. Tobert, we have all conducted our corporate performance scores, and I'm pleased to bring forward these recommendations on behalf of council, that we adopt Mayor Nenshi's recommendations on the city manager's performance review of 2010 on your variable pay award equivalent to 7.8% or $24,572.2. Just kidding. Of Mr. Tobert's base salary, and this, of course, acknowledges that there's no base salary increase as there has been in previous years and for this year of 2011. And we request that the mayor meet with Mr. Tobert regarding his 2010 annual performance review in accordance with the MGA section 205.1, and further, that the results of the performance review and report remain confidential under section 174G of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. And Madam Clerk, we've all turned back in our scores. So, with that, if there's a second or, I would ask for your support.
Seconded by Alderman Farrell. On that, any discussion? I see none. Are we agreed? Are any opposed? I see none. Alderman Hodges. I'm sorry, Alderman...
We have the reading of inquiries, if any, your worship.
Could I bring forward the personnel matter, my other one that I was...
Oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Collier-Cart. Go ahead. There is another one.
There's not another one.
Yeah.
Just wanted to go over. Okay, and this is on the personnel briefing and the decision of council in relation to labor bargaining, that council receive the verbal report on personnel briefing and the decision of council, the labor bargaining for information, and that the discussion with respect to the verbal report remain confidential under sections 211A, 241B, 21C, and 21G of the Freedom of Information and Protection and Privacy Act, and this matter will be dealt with on Monday when we have our full council. Thank you. Do I have a second or? Thank you, Alderman Chabot.
Seconded by Alderman Chabot. On that, are we agreed? Any opposed?
Opposed.
Are we safe to go? Alderman Chabot is opposed now, I think, Alderman Hodges. Are we good to go? We're good to go. Okay. I'm just simply move adjournment, your worship. Honored adjournment, are we agreed? Any opposed? Thank you very much. Dinner, I do not believe, has been ordered.
No, it hasn't been.
Oh, dinner has been ordered?
It's already applied.